It is six o'clock. We will start out by reciting the.
Pledge.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Okay, public, public meeting participation rules. Please, one, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Two, begin by stating your name and address. Three, give us your comments, opinions, and questions on the issue being discussed. Or to ensure everyone has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda. We may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow one, one additional time period to provide new information. Five, Pete, please be respectful of the planning commer- commission applicant and your neighbors. Again, thank you for attending. Tom Hilbert chairs.
We need to make a motion to add these two pieces of correspondence. Those two emails. Okay, okay, thank you.
Motion to accept.
I'll support.
Michelle, all in favor?
I, I oppose.
Approval of minutes of June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June twelfth, twenty-four, twenty-three.
Support.
Oh, not supported. Okay, all in favor? Okay, public comment. Uh, if you have something, uh, uh, that's non, non-case related, uh, this would be the time to, uh, comment on, uh, make a comment like that, but if you're, uh, uh, if you would rather, um, if it's in regard to one of the cases, it would probably be, uh, beneficial that you did it during that, uh, time period. So everybody hears and, uh, remembers, so, uh.
Nathan Skibby Supervisor, uh, Charter Township of Alpena. Uh, while we have the wonderful attendance that we do here, uh, this evening, I've run copies of our master plan survey. So if there's anybody that would like to take the opportunity and fill out a survey that would help, uh, the township move forward in a proper direction, uh, over the next ten years, I have hard copies of that survey available. They'll be sitting right on this little ledge. Uh, by all means, if you can do it electronically, you can go to alpenatownship.com on our homepage towards the bottom of that screen. You'll also find, uh, a link to our survey, so.
Anybody else? Okay, correspondence reports six twenty-three, number six dash twenty-three, number seven dash twenty-three, eight dash amended, eight twenty-three amended, nine twenty-three by Rick Duel. And emails regarding case P dash seven dash twenty-three. T N M Leonard and R and P Martinez.
No, it was in the final agenda. I got the whole bit.
Okay, we are gonna, um. Okay, we'll, we'll start our, uh, our public hearings. Okay, we're gonna do case number P dash zero seven dash twenty-three. William Shadig requests a special approval used for a cottage industry to recycle metals. Property is located on Brook Street, parcel number zero one eight dash four one zero dash zero 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 dash zero three zero dash zero zero in a mixed residential R three zone.
I'll, I'll introduce the case, uh, on behalf of, uh, the Shadigs, uh, six oh nine Brook Street. Uh, since I've taken office, I think I've had correspondence with the Shadig family. Uh, and, uh, tried diligently to find a creative solution to the ongoing, uh, unsightliness of the property, which I think, uh, the letters of the surrounding neighborhoods probably have a similar, uh, similarity and theme. Uh, that is duly noted, uh, as this has been on ordinance one thirty-seven, uh, since I've taken office. This is actually an opportunity to, uh, correct numerous, uh, past practices. Uh, the cottage industry ask, uh, he could have actually gone through the approach of just, uh, permitted special use of an accessory building uh, on his adjacent parcels. Uh, the best way for the township and the community to look at this is to actually define it as what it historically always has been. Uh, Mr. Shadig is, uh, an active recycler, um, and scrapper. Um, and so this, uh, application and special use request allows for, uh, Mr. Shadig, uh, to do it the right way. Uh, and he's been very committed to this process through several meetings. Uh, this takes the unsightliness, uh, that we've had in the township on Brook Street. And, uh, with your guidance and stipulations, keeps it that way, uh, moving forward into the future. Uh, like I said, this isn't a change of use. This is, this is actually how as zoning administrator, I would define the use of the property. Um, and so I'll let Mr. Shadig speak for himself, uh, before this commission, but this actually cleans several issues up in regards to zoning administration. It removes a blight case. It satisfies, uh, an existing non-conformity in terms of a use. And affords Mr. Shadig, uh, like I said, with the stipulations brought forward by this commission, the opportunity to actually house everything that's been uh, in public purview, uh, for years. There's my introduction. If you do have questions, Mr. and Mrs. Shadig are here as well.
I'll make a motion. Okay, Mr. Shadig.
Yeah, I'm Bill Shadig, six oh nine Brook Street. Um, it's pretty much, uh, for cold storage. I do a little bit of scrapping, but it's to get all my lawnmowers, vehicles, boats inside, so they're not, you know, out in the yard. You know, as, as at this point, it's not gonna have power, water, it's just to get stuff in the building.
So no, no power, no water?
Not at this time, no. Down the road possibly, but.
Is this gonna have a concrete floor in it?
Yes.
Is it hooked up, gonna be hooked up to like a containment area or?
No, just gonna have a flat floor.
Where would, uh, if you had a spill, where would it go?
Uh, basically, what I have been doing is I put it in a container like for Walmart. And I'd take it there and they have a container, they dump it down.
And you're gonna access through an existing driveway? Do you see, uh, improving that driver? Is that kinda gonna be the way it is?
That, that should be sufficient.
And then in the, uh, uh, special approval use or report, uh, zero seven twenty-three, uh, prepared by Richard Duel, our planning consultant. Item one is adjacent uses, uh, the use, location and size and and size of use and the nature and density of operators shall not be such to disrupt the orderly pro- proper development of the district as a whole, or be in conflict with, or discourage the principal permitted uses of adjacent or neighboring plants and buildings. And it says need should suggest needs to be discussed.
Yes. So, so it sort of sounds like there's a lot of lawnmowers and stuff scattered throughout the property right now. And you are putting up the pole barn, like to clean everything. Pole barn will be a nice looking building that everybody in the neighborhood should be happy with it.
Is it large enough to house all of the stuff that you have there now?
Yes.
What's your timeline for construction?
Uh, as soon as it gets approved, the guy will start building.
So do you plan on doing any type of landscaping to match the neighborhood around this building?
That's pretty much wooded all around, but if I have to, I'll put a fence up.
So, I was, I went, I was by the property and, um, your house is to the, I guess, to be the south?
Correct.
And the, that building would go to the north of that?
Right.
Okay, and then you have like a fence, a privacy fence of some kind in there, and I could see some vehicles parked back there.
Right.
That's about where the building's gonna go?
No, it's going over on that side lot.
One more lot over.
So I went all the way to the corner and then I have two lots on Long Street.
Yeah. Will you be doing anything on that, those two lots on Long Street?
Nope.
That's gonna stay woods?
Yep.
Is there anything in the woods now?
No, just brush, brush clippings.
So you've got an empty lot between you, which is yours, but between you and the pole barn you wanna build?
Yes.
We kinda wanna do it that way and keep it separate, so I'm down the line saying when we're gone, our boys can keep, say, the pole barn, and if they wanna sell the house and the lot, they can.
There's no plans to do anything with that metal lot?
Nope.
The process of looking at this, uh, special use under cottage industry does not mean that there is going to be commercial use on the property. The cottage industry unto itself is defined by the activities, uh, that Mr. Shadig has had, so I know that some of the, the concerns were a, a commercial in nature. This is not a commercial venture. This is just what's had been there and now it's gonna be from going outside and exposed.
Cause some of the vehicles you've had parked right next to the house, um, were kinda behind that.
Right.
Behind that fence, so there's still some, there were still some, uh, uh, stuff there. I don't know why. And that, all that stuff you intend to put in, uh, plus the vehicles are?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, then our, uh, one more que- um, special land use shall not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of traffic, noise, vibration, dust, fume, smoke, glare, flashing lights, or disposal of waste than the operation of any principal permitted use. And, uh, our consultant recommends we talk about that and, I'm, I mean, things like, you know, you address the, the oil or antifreeze or whatever, uh, you know, if you're, you, I, you obviously deal with, you have some vehicles, so.
Right.
So. So your, uh, intent is to contain all that?
Right.
Anything that could, uh.
There's a couple other ones that need to be discussed at the meeting time.
And item three, uh, you shall not increase hazards from fire and other dangers to either the property or adjacent properties. That is somewhat, uh, similar in nature to number two, but just wanna, uh, safety is, is so important. If I have any questions? The use will not impair the purpose and intent of this ordinance.
Can I ask? I'm, I'm just assuming that this is, this is hobby stuff that you tinker on or? Okay, so i- is there welding going on? Is there, I mean, it's, I'm just wondering, cause we have to consider smoke, fire, dust, let, sound, you know, noise, all that kinda stuff. Um, you know, before we even say like, yeah, you can do it with a fence or we can do it with this, so.
Just for, you know, cold storage, might change my oil in there, might, you know, change tires. You know, but as far as, you know, if somebody working there or being there till twelve o'clock at night, you know, work and making noise, you know, there's, it's just storage.
Okay.
How are you going to do work in there if you have no power?
Uh, generator hand tools. Like I said, it's more just storage. There's not gonna be really a lot of, you know, working in there.
So the generator's gonna be running while you're running your, working your tools?
Probably, uh, but there's not gonna be a lot of work and it's to get my stuff out of my yard into a building is the main purpose of putting the building up.
So you don't, you say no power now, but that?
Down the road, I might, you know, put power and water in it, but right now it's just to get the stuff out of my yard into the building.
Right, and if you had water, then you'd have to have sewer tubes, so.
Right.
Yeah, so that would be, uh, a health department.
No, that'd be township, uh, we have infrastructure at that location.
Oh, we have infrastructure, okay, yeah, sorry, not, not set that, alright. Okay. But we would have, uh, a say in how he does that, then. Power that, that's not really our call, okay.
So why call it recycling? That's what Mr. Skibby called it.
Some of these activities were just that of some scrapping activity. Okay, so, see, in that conversation, when you look at ordinance one forty-two, the best way for us as a municipality to define that activity is under a cottage industry because it doesn't occupy twenty-five percent of the home. Good, now, these are five parcels adjacent to a residential parcel. Um, and that activity, when there's monetary gain, the best and easiest way to classify that, whether it's, it's non-commercial, but there is a commercial gain, is the cottage industry. And so that covered every base. Otherwise, this could have been as easy as just saying, uh, permitted special accessory building. But then this case, if there's activity downstream, this planning commission doesn't have a say. This is an opportunity to clean up a blight scenario and say, as you've already forecasted, downstream, are you going to have utilities? Now you could say, uh, in the instance, you could put stipulations on this case. Whereas if I permitted, uh, an accessory building sold just for cold storage, then we don't have to have that conversation. We have a sound direction with this entire commission saying, we agree with that activity, uh, or the lack thereof, uh, activity. But in five years, if you attach the utilities, you know, you're, you're, you're noise concerned about the generator or other utilities. You actually now have those abilities to say, yes, we agree with that, we have these stipulations in terms of if there's hours of operation you wanted to define, they're in. This isn't a business. But there are commercial gains, so this was, this happened to be the best way to define it looking forward.
Now, now is, uh, if anybody in the audience has any, um, coming up to the, oh, you can, oh, they did. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Stuart Adams, this is my wife Kimberly. We both live at eight twenty-seven Long Street.
We're directly behind them. Um, our property is behind their empty lot, that's their junkyard right now. So the biggest thing is, communication is a very big, very high fence between us and them.
We've been having a look at their junkyard for several years now. And honestly, I wonder if the cold storage is gonna spill outside the pole barn he wants to put up. Not to mention the noise that'll be, if he's gonna be using generators and stuff, is right behind us. And I guess, and I've also been, have concerns about the vehicles and everything else that have been sitting behind their house and what fluids or other metals are not seeping down into the ground. And if, if storage shows, expand outside that building again, which I think it will, what kind of contaminants is gonna be there?
When you say a very tall fence, like, how tall?
Right now, we have a, um, six foot, you can see.
We've grown seeders up that help. Obscured. You still see through the seeders in there, and it's visible through over top of the six foot flats even.
Cause I noticed, I, and I did drive on around on line, and his lot comes up to line. So you're not, um, so you must be on the right or the left of the?
We are the last house, right on the side of the, of the woods.
We're directly behind the.
We're directly behind their property. And their pop- their property kinda encapsulates us to a certain extent. It goes behind us and to the side of us.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Rosenbeck. I live at six oh eight South Brook Street, directly across from the Shadigs. I get to look out my window at the stuff in his yard. Currently, there are four trailers, a tractor, two boats, various things under tarp. It is blight. And I don't like looking at it. And I have some concerns because as the previous, um, people who got up and spoke talked about, is this building going to be big enough to house everything that they have? I don't know. I don't think this is just lawnmowers that they're talking about. They frequently flip vehicles. They have them parked in their yard and then they sell them. And it does affect traffic when they do actually sell them because it stops traffic. And Brook Street there has a lot of traffic going by. And so I do have some concerns about that. And I definitely have concerns about contamination in the, in the ground from these vehicles that are sitting on their lawn. So those are my concerns and I hope you take those into account.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Gouvea. My mother and I live directly across the parcel that the building would be put up on. Um, we live at six oh four South Brook Street. We have a duplex. My mom's ninety-eight. She lives on one side and I live on the other. I don't speak well in front of people, so I'd like to read the email that I sent, um, who kindly answered me. I'm writing this morning to express concern over the, the use of the parcel owned by William Shadig. I understand he has requested approval to recycle metals on this property. I hope this will not be approved. That part, property is situated directly across from my mother and my home, six oh four South Brook Street. And we are very concerned. We, as well as our neighbors, take great pride in the upkeep of our home. If you drive down our street, you will notice that all the homes are very well cared for, with the exception of Mr. Shadigs. I don't know the man, but he has recently shown great disregard to our homes and our safety. His parcel is very overrun with trees and other growth, and he foolishly started a fire in there that burnt for three days. We had smoke coming at our home for three days until my neighbor, Vicki Richards, called the fire department and they came and put it out at seven o'clock on a Sunday night. It was unattended during that time. And, um, we have a lot of traffic on our street. As it is, I think if there was traffic, more traffic because of a business, which is what they called it, recycling metal, a business, I thought, um, I was concerned about that as well. We have, um, shared emails back and forth, and he did say that everything will be put in a building. But if they can't make him do that now, how will we be sure he does that in the future?
And that's why in this case is before this, these are, this has been, I think, a neighborhood concern for decades. Um, and so how best to have control on it than have it before that? Because all the questions and the concerns that are being addressed to this commission, you can actually address by way of stipulations. Nothing to be outside of the bill.
Well, and so we, by, you have a question? So, so the question, and I hate to speak off, because, so another neighbor is concerned about, and, and rightfully so, about line of sight, uh, the vegetation. Um, in both the, the site plan review meetings, I sat down with the Shadigs. Uh, their intent is to leave as much of the wooded timber line surrounding all the, the neighboring adjoining parcels. Uh, I also told them that a potential, uh, stipulation, if afforded, would be fencing. Um, so these are all things that the Shadigs have knowingly accepted in pursuit of this. And again, it seems like a, a misnomer to say that they're going for special use under cottage industry for commercial activity. But our zoning defines it that way. It d- doesn't mean that it's a, it's a nine to five business. It just means that that is the style of activity, and so that's how we have to look at it. Um, and so that's why this made better sense to bring for, to the planning commissions to address these potential concerns down, down range than just to say, Mr. Shadig, as zoning administrator, I can give you permitted special use for an accessory. Mr. Shade Dick, yeah, zoning administrator, I can give you permitted special use for an accessory building on your adjacent parcels. And then I'm not afforded any ability to put stipulations on. This commission has the ability to put stipulations on that would void the special use if broken. And henceforth, this was the, the better sound approach for this case.
We're at, we may twenty south lawn again. I also have concerns about what this is going to, that cause is going to affect property values in the area. If they're getting this rezoned and even slightly commercial and they're going to be putting a scrapyard there, their storage unit for that, how will this affect our property values? My biggest concern is how badly is that going to make our property values go down as a result of that being there?
It's currently an R three, which is mixed residential. And so businesses are afforded in R three designated. Um, and commercial evaluation on taxable value could actually have a pendulum. It could actually, as John said, what is that concern? It could actually go up, uh, depending on which, I mean, so. Those are to be determined, but principally the biggest thing is the historical misuse and this is an opportunity to clean that. Not under a commercial guise, but actually address it.
If, uh, if we have, uh, if this building results in them cleaning up all the stuff that's around their house, I don't see that as being a detriment of value of the properties, but but, uh, with no power in the building, I would be concerned about, uh, ours operation of a generator. Cause I, I own a, I own a garage that's separate from home. I have power there, but I don't. So that would be definitely one of my concerns, but. Anybody else have anything to add?
I, I have a great amount of concern and I share with the residents who shared and thank you all for speaking, um, that, that the overflow, um, fencing noise. And, um, I apologize that I don't know what, what we can limit as far as reinspection. I mean, I don't know if that's something that we can, we can add as a step. Is that something we can do?
Yes, you can actually put in as, uh, was afforded A and L. I've conducted two site visits in terms of their movements. Um, so yeah, I mean, put it on the docket.
A and L.
Uh, that was the, uh, large recycling.
Oh, that's right. Okay. I remember.
Yeah, I, I thought it was meant something like R and D. That's what I thought too.
No, no, sorry. So yeah, those were stipulations. I think it was, uh, biannual or quarterly inspections to make sure that they're staying on and meeting the criteria that was brought forward. So.
And if they don't?
Then they lose special use and then they are subject to the.
My concern with the fences and even a really high fence is then you're just in a way, what happens behind the fence and nobody knows, nobody knows. Unless we've got these inspections quarterly.
So there, there, I don't see that there's, unless Mr. Shade gets rid of all of this stuff on his private and addresses the other concerns. This was for lack of a better approach. Outside of that caveat, which hasn't been able to happen for decades. This was a way to actually alleviate the eyesore that all the neighbors and, and the high traffic folks, that very good point made by offices thus far. That's why I, I brought this item to this commission. If you can put stipulations on it. And if he's void and deficient in the stipulations, they lose. That's the symbol of yes. Uh, but then if they lose that.
So if they lose special use because they don't follow protocol to the stipulations brought forward by this commission, then that special use or this is not a rezone or in certain instances where there's rezones, but in, in an R three district, special use for, uh, cottage industry. Uh, if they are null and void on any of the stipulations brought forward, they have an, one opportunity to, to make that whole. And if they're still void by the next visit, then I bring that, this case right back to the planning commission to say, I want this, uh, nullified. Uh, and the special use would be withdrawn and then we continue to proceed as we historically have under blight. Uh, yeah, I, I would love for you to come with me on a day on my blight tours and try to find that those leverage points. Every case is a little different with the complexity of this case and knowing how long it's been existing. This was the quickest way to actually contain it, get it out of sight. He's not looking for a commercial venture. Like I said, he does some recycling, the best I know. I don't know all commercial activity. But it fit the bill of, if there's commercial gain and it's not within the home, then it meets the standards of cottage industry. Um, the same as a gal making twenty-five percent of her cupcakes in her home. If she declares that kitchen, that's a home occupation. Of which most times we don't know what home occupations or where cottage industries are because most people don't understand zoning enough to go forward and try to do things the right way. Uh, through various correspondence over the years with the shade eggs. We actually, this is actually from my seat, ma'am. And, and I don't live on Brook Street, but there are valid concerns and I think that's what I wanted is to everybody address their concerns. Because at the end of the day, I think you would all agree that what you want to see is not see it. And if we can get that. Now, when you say contamination, um, that's beyond the scope of even the county or the, the township or this commission. That is, if there's contamination concerns, then you have to call Eagle. That is the entity. And before you call Eagle, then you have a local jurisdiction, which is, uh, district health department before. You utilize those. But I would also state that if there's concerns about contamination, this is happening for most of our lifetimes. And I don't know if a call's ever been made to Eagle in terms of a, a worry of contamination. Um, and that's why in regards to the, uh, cold storage building, there is a slab. Because now you have the ability to actually mitigate, uh, if there is a leak. I, I see new vehicles leak, so all vehicles tend to leak. Um, some of the vehicles on Mr. Shade's property may leak a little bit more than others. Um, but that is a concern that would be addressed at that level. Um, but yeah, that's, but yes. Well, I haven't always been the zoning administrator now, so. Yeah. And, and there have, and there have been failures. This commission. Because it could be. It, it already is. And I think that Mr. Shade's finally acknowledged that. And in my line of work dealing with people with ordinance one thirty-seven and life, the first step is admitting. He's been active and willing participant in accepting the fact that this is a scenario he doesn't want to have. And he sees that the best way for is actually contain and have a slab floor that mitigates the concerns of leak. But if that was a concern, then I would have implored you years ago to make that call. Here we have an opportunity. That's all I see it as is. We have an issue that's, for a lack of a better adjective, plagued the Brook Street corridor. The Brook Street corridor now has a means to mitigate having that a visible eyesore moving forward. This commission has the ability to put stipulations on that activity to such an extent that if he falls out of compliance, then that starts right back to a bad spot. And I think that this is really truly a win-win. Um, it may not seem like that, but that's why your concerns are so valuable. Because if the commission so chooses to move forward with this special use, they can put those stipulations on. And so if part of that stipulation is, uh, quarterly review for years, that's more palatable than the fifty-two blight cases that I'm currently working actively with. And so when I see, and it's a horrible scenario, every case with blight is different. I've been in office since twenty sixteen. This case has existed from a few weeks before twenty sixteen. And this is a solid way to clean the mess, get it hidden and have control. So. Uh, if I could, I, I know you don't, but they can't hear your voice here, by this.
I just want to know, it'd be something like nothing to be piled in there until there is a nice building put out. Before any job can start getting piled.
So then I guess Miss Bobias, and I pronounced the name Boobia, sorry. Um. No worries. Um, noted, um. Can you make them pull stuff? Now, my, my rebuttal to that, that sounds idealistic. And now which property or where is the, the items for say, where are they going to be housed? Cause you're just, what you'll do in the interim is take one problem, make it a second problem on a second site. And now I got to make sure that what happened on a second site finds its way back. Now, though, all the issue that is actually currently taking place on Mr. Shade's property is actually the parcel immediately affiliated with the principal residence. The five lots in question are, were, uh, purchased through the state. Uh, he is willing to be as good of a neighbor moving forward. I take that as a win. Um, it, if sometimes gray is a good gray to go forward with. Um, there's nothing ideal, but this does address as many of the concerns that have historically plagued this property and the township in that corridor for a good chunk of my life. So that's why, like I said, I, I feel that this is an approach that's best suited for the planning commission. Because they're the entity that can actually put those stipulations on the activity there. If I were to afford this, which was my vested right as zoning administrator to approve, uh, a, an detached accessory building. But then I would have no controls over these activities. And so to me, it's better to have control than to continue to let what's happened continue to happen. So.
In R three district, are there noise or ordinances that you can't exceed generator speaking, I guess, like, cause I have a generator. And it's small, so very quiet, but how big is the generator he's planning on running? How loud will it be? Can it not exceed certain deserts?
I can, I can answer that quickly enough. Uh, the township does have a noise ordinance, but unfortunately that noise ordinance was constructed in nineteen ninety-three when it seems like the only thing that made noise were cars and base. Uh, so we actually have no noise ordinance that is affiliated with stationary objects, i.e. a residential, commercial, et cetera. That being said, you do have the ability to control it. You could, uh, I guess it would still, even though it's not a commercial activity, declare what his hours of operation would be. And within those hours of operation, uh, a generator. Or, or, you know, you could also put in a stipulation as, as soon as, uh, economically possible to affiliate and connect to open a power as a supply. Then now you've mitigated that concern. Um, but a valid one nonetheless. And I think the best approach to the noise concerns is define what he's going to do, when he's going to do. You have that ability. So I was looking at cold storage. Like I said, it's not that he isn't a massively active scrapper from my purview. It's just that is how it actually best fit the cottage industry aspect and afforded th- this commission to have the opportunity to see the case.
We did not approve this. He could still, uh, come to the building department and say, I'm going to construct this thirty-two hundred square.
It is his right, but then I would, until he actually cleaned it up, just continued the, the one thirty-seven. This afforded better control than staying the course on one thirty-seven. This is an opportunity to clean it whole, wholeheartedly. Um, and then you can put stipulations on that no equipment, no materials otherwise are left outside. And to your point, very true, Mr. Stender is sometimes the higher the fence isn't the best approach because the higher the fence outside of having quarterly reviews means that I don't have line of sight. And unless I have legal authority from property owners, I can't gain access to said property. So that would impede, but if that would be able to be, um, circumnavigated with quarterly review.
Just making my list of stipulations.
Okay, motion closed. Oh, if they were closing hearing.
Hi, hi.
Phil, there is a left. There is a left, one, one to ten.
Yep.
Okay.
I was adding to it.
All right, now, um, we have the, uh, client commission as the option of approving the, uh, building as is, approving the building with stipulations or denying the request. Or table, I guess, but.
I don't think that's going to solve it.
But all the information was provided.
I'm just reading the list to make sure that I didn't double up on something.
Now, can we take more time to look through the stipulations and add, detract or whatever? I just, there's, there's things I would like to look into further based on the discussion we've had here tonight.
Table it.
Yeah. I guess that's our, uh, yeah. I, I just, I would feel better about coming back to the commission with, with my thoughts on the, uh, on the stipulation, which there must be on this. Because there's several that aren't in there recommended that we should put in, I think. That's my fault. Okay, for example. Um, timeframe on, uh, on when things have to be done. Um, what happens if it's not cleaned up to the criteria of our inspector? So, et cetera.
A timeline on.
I mean, it says.
Checking things.
Um, fluids will be stored in an ASC approved container kept only in small quantity. What's a small quantity? You know, I think that if we're going to address this, we need to say it needs to be less than five gallons or less than one or whatever.
A motion to table? A motion to table? I, well, I'll support it. I'll support your motion to table.
Good table.
For further considerations to conditions to be met.
So, next meeting?
I would say.
Yeah.
Till our September eleventh meeting?
Yeah.
So, John, you made a motion.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Uh, Norm?
Yes.
Don Stender?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Hey, case number two. Northeast, uh, case number P dash zero six dash two three northeast. Sanctuary requests a special approval used for a childcare. Center nursery school property is located at seven forty-five Thunder Bay Avenue. Parcel number zero one eight dash five four zero five dash zero zero zero. Dash four zero eight dash zero zero in a mixed residential art reason.
Motion open public comment, um, case P zero six dash twenty-three.
Second.
Public hearing, sorry.
Yes, public here. Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, all opposed, okay. Representing the, uh, committee, somebody here from?
Somebody here from Northeast Sanctuary?
Uh, well, we do have, uh, uh. Uh, in terms of Northeast Sanctuary, sorry about that. I was just, uh, talking about stipulations. This is a case, uh, to add, uh. Childcare, uh, facility to the existing structure. Uh, they need, uh, they are currently moving forward with, um. Their site plan and brought that forward. Uh, this is an opportunity that's a, a topic. I know that there are some residents. Uh, of the, the Pag Court area, uh, that will be speaking, uh, after me, but. They are bringing forward, uh, since they have childcare that is greater than six people. Uh, it falls under special use in the district, uh, and so forth. They are coming before you, um. Uh, I, I see, uh, she's online top screen, um. Uh, I've worked with a couple individuals, uh, from this project, uh, and given the, the consideration of the need of. Daycare and childcare, uh, they also see that need. Uh, this isn't solely specific to church membership. Uh, but this is something that they're looking at, uh, to address the, the community need for childcare. Uh, are there any other questions in regards to the site plan before you? Cause I did say that I would kind of walk through and answer questions.
Any questions on regard to this? Looks like, uh, uh. Rick didn't come up with any, uh. It met all the criteria for the.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. You guys, uh, can you hear us?
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I drove down to the, uh, uh, end of the road where your, uh, um, facility will be, uh. Is there, I didn't notice like, is there like a playground or anything like that in that area? Or what's, is, do you have a plan for something like that? Just a question I had. I don't even know if it's a, uh. We can, I don't know if that's a requirement even, but I just was wondering.
Right, no, uh, the state said that we can have it as a natural, um. Outside play area and that it wasn't, um, mandatory.
Okay, okay.
What's your timeline on the construction that's currently underway?
Oh, um, we're hoping by the first of September.
So you'd open, could prob- probably this year yet?
Yes, sir.
And Betty and the, uh. Audience have any, uh, would like to address this? Okay.
I am Barbara Ridg at seven forty Thunder Bay Avenue, which is directly across the street from the sanctuary. Here, extremely concerned of the traffic situation. Parking situation has already become out of hand during their church services. Um, to the extent that they're parking behind our vehicles, which the road is not very wide down there. I concern it, um. Heard up, first off, when I, I did not even know that this was in the process of them opening a daycare. At the end of the road, there is a channel, a waterway that runs next to the sanctuary. There's been days during church or after their church services that I've been out and had to. Bring children away from that channel, that they're out on the ice, even in the winter time, very concerning to me. Because there's no way to can really to confine them. There's no fencing around the, the area. That is for starters, but the traffic on that gravel road, the road is already. In very, very poor repair. I have, there's more water in the road than there is in Lake Huron in front of my house. But that is huge concern for me, um, the dust and the noise and. On Thursdays, I believe, or sometime during the week, they're having other. Meetings there, whether it been the alcoholic anonymous or support groups that they're having, and there's a lot of, um. Traffic, even more traffic on those nights, and they turn around directly in front of my, our mailbox. And the light shine into our living room. Um, along with a lot of times there are wheels squealing and gravel flying as people are leaving. Not exactly, um, ideal. What I had seen in moving down to that property, which was my parents and my, um, uncles has spent in the family for years. There's the other many family members that live on Thunder Bay Avenue. And very supportive of this, not wanting this additional traffic in that area at all. Um, there's no other outlet, so they have to turn around in front of my house. I request that you totally deny this. I, I, that's the, because of the fear of the chi- children being close to the water. Um, they, you know, the, the building has been moved down there. In the last couple of years, and I can tolerate the, the, um. Worship services and the meetings that they're having, but for a daycare. We all know that as moms, that moms on their way to work, don't drive slow coming down a road, you know, and if, in a hurry for. Getting back to work, but, um, no, just because of the traffic, it was a retirement home for us. And was really hoping that that's what it would continue to be. Never had any businesses down there before the church, um. I guess it's a church, they call it North, Northeast Sanctuary, but they used to be a kind of coastal church. Um, but there's nothing to identify it as, uh, the, the crosses come down off at the front of the church as well, which I'm not really. Sure why that is, but, um. They have this group that's there meeting now. They have grown their, um. parishioners and their, um, s- community support, and there's a lot of times there are vans that are coming up from Saginaw. Full of other, um. Attendees for their services or whatever, and, um, it's just, it's not a residential. Situation and I would have, had I known this was going to be this way, I would not have moved from Liberty Street. Where I was prior. So, really would consider that you denied this, um, either the traffic, the noise. And also the safety of the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Wagner. I live at six zero six Thunder Bay Avenue, and I have a question as to why. None of us got the letter off this meeting. Barb is my cousin. She lives at the end of the road. She called me. When she got the letter and she said, what do you think about the letter? And I said, what letter? So the only ones I figured that got the letter were the people at the last block, but everybody in our road. They're all going to be affected by this daycare. I'm not against daycare. I taught school for thirty-one years. Daycare is great, but our road is not built. For all the traffic that it has right now. On Sundays, when the church is going up and down. It isn't even safe to be in our front yard. They drive very fast, and I'm not the only neighbor who's wanted to go down and talk to the minister about it. And tell them to slow down. It's our street is mostly older people. We have two fellows on our road that have, uh, MS. So there are ambulances in and out taking care of them. You can check with your fire department about that. It's, it's not built for the traffic that we're getting right now. Only part of the road was paved. And those of us who live on the paved part did pay for that paving when it was done, so much per foot. And the end road is not paved because. My dear uncle who lived at the end refused to pay it, so they stopped it at Henry Street, and that's never brought, been brought back. But that part of the road is horrible. I mean, it's in the spring when it rains. None of us, we can't get down there. There's no place, there's no way we're gonna take our vehicle down that road. I don't know what a daycare situation would be with. How many kids? How many children are they planning to take in?
We're approved for fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, one five.
Okay, so that would be fifteen extra cars racing down the road at. Eight o'clock in the morning and again at five thirty, because we all know mothers are always running late. And, uh, it's just, it's not that kind of a neighborhood. We have mostly senior citizens on our road. They ride their bikes, they walk their dogs. There are no sidewalks. The shoulders of the road are very small. Mr. Levenduski takes his lawnmower and walks down Thunder Bay Avenue and cuts along the side by Nishikewas. I think it's because he worries about his wife. She walks her dog and there's no place to walk it other than somebody's front yard if a car is coming. I know when I ride my bike, if I see traffic, I have to find a driveway that I can get off the road. So it's not, the road is not built for the kind of traffic that's down there, and. That's, that's my main concern. They drive too fast, showing up and down the road, and it's not just the church people. Everybody on the back road, because the back road is so horrible, cut through to our road so they can get on the pavement, and then of course, it's a racetrack. So that's my main concern. I'm not against a, uh, daycare. We need daycares, but it's like. The road is not built for it, and it's the, it's a quiet neighborhood, or it was, so I'd like to be able to enjoy my Sundays too.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Levenduski, the one who walks the dog, and I live at seven eighteen Thunder Bay Avenue. I'm also a retired teacher. Daycare is needed in our community. I know that. I have nothing, no problems with the church. But we have little kids on the street. There are a lot of se- of senior citizens, but there also are three or four families of little kids. Walking down the street today, there was, um, a senior citizen on her tricycle. Uh, a runner, a jogger, little kids on their bikes waving. Um, does, as Barb mentioned, at the channel in the river behind there, I, or playground area or a natural place. There's no natural place to play. Um, if you have driven down there, there's a big parking lot. Um, I just don't think it's appropriate for a daycare. That's just our feelings. Traffic is, oh, besides pets and kids and old people, we have ducks. They're crossing around the street all the time, and deer, so. They do, and I've even stopped people from going too fast when the ducks are crossing the street. They're pet ducks from somebody. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The speed limit is twenty-five.
Um, no, the speed limit is not, because I checked years ago with the state police, and I said, what is, we have no postings down there, and I said. What is, what is the, what is the speed limit on a, on a residential street? He said, is it posted? I said, no. He said, then it's fifty-five. And I said, you mean to tell me people can go fifty-five miles an hour down my road? Yeah, it's not posted.
And they, and they won't post speed limits, they won't, they will.
No, we can't, we can't, we can't do anything, no.
Children have play.
No.
They won't even allow.
Yeah, and it, it is a dead end road, so.
Um, the zoning remains the same. Special use in this.
Okay, and what the special use entail, decide?
Could be this commission affording, uh, the daycare.
That's it, for that lot. So if there's empty lots in there. Uh, what can't go on there? I mean, there, there. There are two empty lots next to Levenduski's, and, um. The Pete, the guy that owns it, I'm pretty sure has a. Gravel training truck, and he, when he thirded the lots, he had lots of equipment, and that's his business. Could something like that?
Private lot, and the individual that's speeding on this doing work for the owner.
Okay.
So.
All right, as, as long as, as long as he doesn't intend to permanently park his equipment underneath Mary's front window.
No, I know, I know that case, that is actually a public parcel. I think that is.
Okay, all right, so we don't, so we don't.
But anything that, anything that's loaded on our three district would be, would be loaded on those vacant lots, and then anything we permitted.
It have to come, that's the thing with special use in any given, uh, zone, especially in a residential area. There's either permitted or a special use. Uh, if they were to, if the piece was to remain at six kids or less. This would not even have to come to this planning, because the state already told you. Um, and so that's why they're here, because they, they're looking at having, sounds like fifteen kids at, at the.
Six kids probably wouldn't be a, a big problem. Yeah, six would, that would be six, that would be fifteen.
Very nice. My golf buddy lives right. Probably right there, Rocky.
So this area where the kids could walk out onto the ice and the water and, and all that. Is it, um, the property that the church is on, the daycare would be on?
It's a drainage ditch that drains all the. I know, it is a channel, but it drains everything, it brings all the water to that end.
It's a dead end into the water.
This is their building, so this Thunder Bay Avenue, so this dead ends into the water.
There's really no way to make that safer for the kids.
Take a motion to close the public hearing?
All second. All in favor? Oh, you weren't done. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, are we, are we allowed to speak to what was spoke? Wonderful. Um, the church in itself, first off, I want to say I'm sorry to our neighbors. I know, we had no clue that this is how you felt. Um, we absolutely, we felt like we've had an open communication going with all of you as best as we can. So we're disheartened to know that this is what your feelings have been. The church in itself as a apostolic Pentecostal church has been there for thirty years. I think it's wonderful to hear all the conversation, though, to know that this is the most you've seen this church grow. That's actually encouraging to us. Uh, we have been the pastors for five years now. Uh, we do know that we are outgrowing the building in the area. And, and we have been actively looking for a bigger, um, church building. But as of yet, that hasn't been able to happen for us, as you guys are very aware of real estate and how things are in Alpena. So we did bring in, uh, the relocatable building onto the property. With thoughts of being able to have classrooms for our Sunday school and to, yes, open it up to the community if they have. Free class needs, which that was, uh, something that we were approached with. A need for recovery classes, a need for, um, veterans meeting together. We, as of yet, don't have a weekly Bible study or service going. So the things that maybe you are seeing during the week, I'm not quite sure what that is. We do get a heavy traffic down that way and it's not just from our church. It is absolutely from the community. We, we laugh about it because we don't know if people are just curious at what's down at the end of this road. And so we get a constant turnaround in the, um, parking lot and we have to bring in gravel every single year. And that's fine, because we know that people don't know we're down there. So it's kind of cool when people come down that way and they say, hey, who are these people? But the, the city, the state, I should say, the, um, we have had the fire inspector, the state fire inspector come out and inspect it. Um, give us guidelines. We've had the, uh, state licensing come out and look at the property. They know that the children will be behind the, um, behind the relocatable building. Not behind the main building, but even still, even if they were, they actually did not seem concerned about that at all. Although we are hoping to put up some kind of fencing. But we have tried our best to follow every single thing that has been asked of us, every question. This, this truly has, has been just a desire to serve our community. Probably about a couple of years ago, I put out on a Alpena, um, forum, what is our greatest need in Alpena right now? And the response that was amazing and majority, the huge portion was childcare. So when we were blessed with this, um, building, we thought, you know, this building's not being used during the week. That's very selfish of us if there's actually a need in our community and we're ignoring it and not fulfilling it. So that's why we started taking these steps to go ahead and try to fulfill what we can fulfill. We know that fifteen children aren't much, but we at least want to start there. And not one single one of those children actually go to our congregation. These are, we have a, we have a waiting list right now, children that are need, needing childcare. And they're all from the community. Not one single family goes to the church. So it is definitely serving our community, not serving us. Uh, truthfully, I will be working for free. Uh, we've already have hired people from the community. Um, in hopes that this would be passed. Um, there was a reassurance, we thought for sure that this would be. Uh, because of the great need. I don't know how to, I mean, we can absolutely talk to our congregation personally about the speeding. We actually have, we've talked to the teenagers that come, say, please, slow it down, slow it down. I feel like my husband and I have been very respectful and, and our, um, teenagers that drive, our personal teenagers. Um, to drive as slow as possible, to the point, we definitely wave at our neighbors. We pull over, talk to their dogs, some of them, maybe not, um, the, that couple there, I don't know what your dog's name is. But I do know Bella and I do know, um, the, we do know the Woodruffs and, um, Barb. And, um, you know, the, the child that was probably on the ice was actually probably my child. And he has been, um, talked to extremely sternly about that. And he has been minding about that. I don't know, my, um, my husband maybe has another thought or something.
No, 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 um, no, this is, this is, this is good that actually some of this communication is, is going on. And, and, uh, you know, I, I apologize for, you know, a- any type of surprise that this may have caused. If, if there were, and I don't know if this is the right form for this, but you know, openly, I apologize to our neighbors here. If, you know, there's been someone that's been, you know, tearing down the road or, you know, causing any kind of issue like that. I, I really, we, we will talk to, we will talk to everybody that comes down that road. As far as the people that we're responsible for. And, uh, we will, we will handle that situation. But, uh, I'm, I'm sorry that had to come out here and we couldn't talk about this, you know, while it was going. I'm not sure why it came out here. Truthfully, but, uh, you know, it's, I think it's, I, I, I think we will, we will handle it. Um, so I, I apologize for that, but, uh, it's, and I'll just piggyback up my wife's statement here that. Um, you know, we, we did, we saw a need in the community and, uh, we, we addressed that need. I, I think that's part of our responsibility as a, a ministry team. Um, and, and just for the, I guess, for the sake of definition, a, a minister by definition is a servant. And that is our, that is, has been our goal from day one when we stepped into this, this role. And this, in this church and in this community. Um, and so I, 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 I apologize, uh, for if there, if there has been any trouble. Um, I know that, you know, the words have already been spoken. There's ones that, you know, they, they want it denied. Um, and, and I understand your point of view and, um, but I feel like this is what we are supposed to do. So, um, however, you know, however, uh, the, you know, the township or zoning commission, however you need to proceed. Um, you know, we're not ones that are going to, uh. We've got a lot invested into this al- already. I mean, there, there's a lot invested here. And, uh, and I guess we, we don't know exactly where to go from here. But we, you know, we, this is your jurisdiction, this is your decision. And, uh, we, we turn it back over into your capable hands here. I, I think I've said all that I need to say. Thank you.
We would be more than, we would be more than happy to have you come to the center and see it and ask your questions. And discuss if there's, uh, what we can do to remedy some things. We just ask that you, we really, like my husband just said, we have invested a lot, a lot into this already. Um, to the point that we know we can't even get this back. So, uh, whatever we can do to help with any questions or concerns, we're, we are absolutely on board. And willing to work with you and however to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need another motion?
Sure. Okay, go, go ahead. I'm sorry.
My name's Herb Lewandowski. Uh, I live at seven eighteen Thunder Bay Avenue. I have a lot of respect for them, meaning the two people. Uh, they've done a great job of building up the church, but it's in the wrong location. I'm gonna be honest with you. And then, um, the traffic is unbelievable. If I didn't know, somebody at the road commission, that road was being tore up to nothing. The bumps last year were so bad that, uh, we had complaints all over the place. I know Kurt at the road commission, he's in charge. He said the township did not budget any money for that road for improvements. And I begged him, he came through, but eight or nine, uh, loads of, of, of good material. And leveled that road so that we could drive on it. What happens during the week if they have an event is the cars are stacked up along the road. Which makes a very difficult situation for people to walk in. The other thing that we see is the speeding. When they have an AAA meeting, I don't know that you realize what those people do. But we've had people try traveling at fifty, fifty-five miles an hour from the end of that road past my home. And I'm, I'm not down but two hundred and fifty feet. And it's scary. I've got a dog outside. The, uh, Woodruffs have grandchildren now. There's one that's, I think, three. He's gonna be walking toward that road. And he, they're down further, but these vehicles are traveling. And the bottom line is that parking lot that they have is too small. They had an event last year, I think it was last year, and they used the parking across the road that the Woodruffs own. I was cutting the grass last year so that it would look good. And they parked there. And that's fine. I mean, if they could work on an arrangement for parking, that would help. But the concern I have is that there is no playground for these fifteen kids. There is insufficient parking. They've done a great job with this church, to be honest with you. And they're beautiful people to wave and talk to. But we have an issue and I don't know how to resolve it. And there just isn't enough room. And the road isn't adequate. If you want to pave the road, that would make, that would help. If you want to buy some property. Donate it to the church, okay, fine. But something has to give. And I don't know what to tell them. I, we're caught in the middle. And as a professional artist, I've been tempted to build signs that say, slow down, children, pets. We talk about deer. We have at least twenty deer that live in that neighborhood and they cross the road. One of these days, it's gonna be a huge mess. There are ducks there. Well, it's just, it's, it's, it's a concern. And again, I have respect for them. The childcare thing, we need it. I think we have the wrong location.
Anybody else?
I know that Mr. and Mrs. Woodruff have been spoken, but they have a lot of property on that, on Thunder Bay Avenue that they rent out. And I'm seeing more and more younger people living there with more children and animals, both. I myself have two dogs. Like Herb said, we've got, you know, the deer and all the wildlife in the area. But those, there's lots of other children other than would, um, Mr. and Mrs. Woodruff's grandchildren. Um, there's at least three houses that have three or four kids right now that I'm coming down the road. So it, it is, and I do, I, I agree, right, I respect what they've done with the church and the, and the, how they've grown it. But it's not in the right place. It's just not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everybody.
How about now, third time's turn? Move to close the public hearing.
No, your second, all in favor?
Again.
All right. Okay, um, again, we have the, uh, we can have a motion to approve the special land use for childcare center. We have a motion, we can have a motion to approve with special, the special land use childcare center. With, with, uh, stipulations, restrictions, or are we gonna have a motion to deny? Or a motion table, which we did last. So we have to, uh.
I make a motion to deny the special land use for a childcare center and nursery school.
All second.
So the group made a motion to deny the case, special for, and supported by their dairy. We'll call vote, the, um, Corey.
All support.
Support. Okay, if I vote no, I'm saying what?
If you vote no, you're saying you don't support the motion to deny.
No. Yes.
Yes.
So, uh, the motion to deny.
Is three.
Is case three still, though?
Case three is the west, is the case P dash zero nine dash two three. West Design Center requests special approval use for vertical expansion of existing non-conformity. Property is located at ninety-one seventy US twenty-three north, north. Parcel number zero one three dash zero one one dash zero 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 dash four four five dash zero zero. In a waterfront residential zone district. Lisa West, correct? Lisa West is the, uh, uh, is representative of the owner. The owner is. The owner carries FEMA, okay.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All support.
All in favor? Opposed, okay.
All right, so I'm West Design Center at twenty-eighty Worth Road. So, um, as I submitted, um, we just were, um, asking permission. We've got a residence next to a residence existing that doesn't conform. They're close together. You know, neither of them, both of them are off, are, are within the setback. Yes. So I submitted the site plan, so you can see what's going on. Um, so as it stands right now, um, the owners would like to expand up. And we talked to, um, the building official right away to see, you know, legally or correctly how that structure would look. Which is, um, creating a, a wall that is one hour fire rated from the inside and also one hour fire rated from the outside. Meaning if the neighbor has a fire, there's one hour protection. If the FEMA residence has a fire, there's one hour protection each direction. Okay, so it's very specifically built. Um, the wall would have, um, most likely no windows. We could have windows that would meet that requirement, but the chances are, we won't worry about it. Um, right now, neither residence has a view out there, out there adjoining sides. Um, so I just submitted, um, the way the, you know, the UL, um, requirement for what that wall would look like. Um, gave you the site plan to show you the distance between the buildings. And then just a quick, a real quick mock-up of, you know, what the elevation massing, um, would look like. Going, going up. Um, the first floor will be, um, eight foot. The second floor will be eight foot. We're not doing soaring, you know, nine, ten, twelve foot ceilings or anything like that. The roof pitch is very menial. It'll be a, um, a modern look. We're not gonna have eight, twelve pitches to make things any taller than they have to be. And I know height isn't such a big deal anymore, you know, our overall, um, requirements. But the median height will be about twenty-three feet to the middle of the roof. Um, but other than that, I guess any questions you guys have, I'm, I'm willing to answer.
And there's really not a, uh. You won't be blocking the view of the lake, because there really isn't. You won't be blocking the view of the lake, because there really isn't one from that.
No.
From that point.
No, no blocking the view of the lake and, and actually we're making it safer. Because if nothing changes, those houses are right next to each other and a fire is a fire. If both places would have a, a real chance of being on fire. So technically, the improvement will also make it safer. I mean, I get it, we're asking, we're, I mean, I'm not pretending we're not asking for a height, but it is going to be a safer construction. Because the first floor will be, that wall will be even up with the same UL requirements as the second floor. On that wall.
Excuse my ignorance.
Hey, no problem.
I'm not a builder.
Yes.
Uh, but I used to know one and this firewall, it's part of the house?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I'm picturing a wall in between those.
No, so that, yeah, so that wall on the shell, starting at the first floor that already exists, okay? That first floor wall even will get built with the stringent requirements of one hour both directions.
Okay.
And then we go up and everything new on that wall will be built the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're gonna dissect the wall that's there and?
We're gonna add to it basically, yeah. Yeah.
And the. Building inspectors. Feeling this is probably, uh, this would be safer than once there, once there.
And, and we made no assumptions that we could, the minute that we knew we wanted to do something there and we started considering our, our. Close proximity, I mean, we, we immediately started talking to Kevin to say what would our option be? I mean, we weren't pretending at, at any moment that we could just. Do it.
Right.
And where those stakes are there, there's up there today, that's the highway right away? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
No, we, uh, made for a survey, this.
Okay.
Survey all sides of the property to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, oh, I know it's, it's within your right way, but I just wondered where the highway right?
Well, the front stakes would be the highway.
That's the highway right?
That's what they would stake for them.
Yeah. Alright, that's what I thought.
Yep. There's water and sewer there.
Yep, existing building, yep, water and sewer.
Water and septic.
Or water. Sorry about that, yeah.
And those, uh, according to. That, it's adequate, correct? Yes, and the health department has.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Do you live there currently?
No.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
I don't.
Uh, anybody in the audience have any? Comments?
I, I did have, uh, uh, one concern, uh, is that given the consideration of the setback, uh, to one of the neighboring properties, which is less than five foot henceforth, the existing non-conformity issues, uh, and special use to go up. Um, I believe it's, uh. Uh, did, uh, did I forward a letter from Ms. Burns? Fine, I didn't get it to you, so, uh. There are some concerns and rightfully so, uh, and I guess I, I'll represent that, those concerns. Uh, one being principally, uh, utilization of the neighboring parcel during this phase and that's a concern. Uh, so I think that, that, that the abutting neighbor, uh, would like to have confidence in the fact that, uh, private property wouldn't be degraded any further. Other than that, uh, the other positive comment I got was from a neighbor that was at the end of the three hundred foot by state law notice, hence where that's a radius. Um, in the other case, a, a lady spoke that she wasn't notified. Outside the three hundred foot. Um, so I've heard, uh, everybody's pretty much in favor, uh, the only concern and consideration would be the. To not degrade the neighboring parcel through this phase of construction.
Everyone else, anybody online? Go ahead.
Um, there is less than, I can burn the neighboring next door.
They have less than two feet. Of property. And I, my concern is how are they gonna get on that side of the house to do what they have to do with less than two feet of property? They've already kind of. Told me in a different way about how they were going about and, and they talked me into letting them put the power and the cable underground. And in the process. The, I don't know if it was a power company who did it, they took this big jackhammer machine, I don't know anything about equipment. And they came over on my driveway that I just installed. Last year I put it in the spring and they came right before the snow. Flied and, um, there's sludge, that's what, that, you know, our yards are kind of sludgy and with little rocks. Well, anyway, they took this jackhammer and they ended up in my driveway and it, and it was, I saw them in their yard and I saw them bouncing around, but then when. The snow melted and everything, I had sludge all over and little rocks that, you know, had pitted my new driveway and I have a claw mark. From this piece of equipment that just bounced up and down. And I brought this to Steema's attention, which they said, well, we can patch that when we do our new foundation. Well, I don't wanna patch on the new driveway because that patch is not, it's just gonna. Do the same damage, it's just gonna chip off and I will have it damaged, so my concern is. How are they gonna do this with staying off of my property because they damaged that? Then when they did their underground cable and all that stuff, they had a big piece cut out of my foundation. And then also when they. Did their foundation, they streamed it down and when I was told they were gonna take all that out and, and redo it all, but they only did their portion to make them. You know, whatever, to comply with what they need done, so now there's slopes down and it slopes into my foundation. So now I'm gonna have to correct that because, and I have, and I can't say it happened then, I should've took pictures. I have a crack because they had a jackhammer when they were putting their foundation in too. And I mean, we're talking five feet between the two houses. And my concern is how are they gonna go up? How are they, their eaves right now hang over onto my property, how are we going to? Fix that? I would like, I don't know if anybody came and looked at it to see. How close it is.
It's very.
Very, very close and, and they're on my property every time they walk through there, they're on my property because. You can't walk in that little area with the eve over your head, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Carrie Steema, um, that's kind of our like little vacation spot, um, but nine one seven oh. Uh, we, um, we purchased it, um, by owner from Mr. St. Charles and, um, we have continued to follow every rule that's been requested. And, um, there was no stakes when we bought it, we weren't really clear where the property line was, so we took it upon ourselves to get that new, um, um, what do you call it? Survey taken care of and we have stakes in it and we have no desire to be on Kim's yard or not so anything else. Um, I've been working with, um, Alpina Power for almost two years now and, um, John from Alpina Power, I contacted him when Kim came to me and said she had concerns that that was on her yard. Um, he has assured me as well as Thunder Bay Electric, they had not been in her yard. I can't say if they were or they were not and, um, you know, I, I talked to them, I said, you know, I wasn't there, can you tell me what was going on? Um, we, we have every desire to be good neighbors, but irregardless, we also have a desire to, um, keep up the home that we do, that we did purchase. And I think that needs to be considered, um. I, um, I, I would assume that people could be good neighborly and we could work together, um, we have no desire to be on top of anybody's property as well. But even like with the roof line, that all can be corrected once the better wall is constructed and we can go from there.
I do wanna say as far as the eaves. The other thing that, I don't know if I put it in here, but the gutter. Right, we will, we will have a gutter that will take water, because we can't change where the eve is. And if, we're gonna be higher, so we, we do not intend to have water hitting her property from higher, so the gutter will take. It away, right, it won't hit there. Um, as far as, as far as building it and only having the two and a half feet or whatever it is, I, I agree, that's gonna be difficult and it would be nice to be able to be neighborly during construction. And then everything would get put back to the way it was when it was started. But I also would want to point out that any maintenance or any damage to, to either of those houses would, would require someone walking on the other person's property, which is nobody's fault. It's where the houses are or have been whenever they were built. So even maintenance wise, you know, we have to be able to work with each other on. On, on getting accessing that side of that wall.
Looks like we got about five point two feet between them. Between the two buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so as far as construction.
Yeah.
Um. One point four feet is not enough to. To do the building. To construct it, is it?
Right.
You tell me.
No, right. Exactly, no, we would not, you, you can't, we can do a lot of things with booms and things like that and if the builder was here, he could answer that better. Um, as far as reaching, but you know, we can deconstruct, the roof is coming off, it's not like they're gonna tear all that off and dump it between the buildings, they're gonna, they're gonna methodically take that apart. And, and bring it this direction and, and they take the roof off and all of that. So then construct, I would say the trickiest part of construction on that wall will be getting the siding out. Getting the sheeting, the fire sheeting and the siding will be the most difficult part, but it's not like they're. They don't need equipment over there to build the walls, if that makes sense, because we'll just be building it from the inside of the building. Even setting trusses and stuff, that's cranes that, that won't have to go alongside the building or anything like that, so sheeting inside.
And I guess we can't, um. We, uh, uh, private, uh, somebody going on somebody else's property isn't our, really our. We can't make the rules and, uh, the private property, so.
Right, it's, you just hope that you can.
Well, the neighbor, again, the agreement would have between the neighbors, that's not our, that's not the planning commission's job, so. And I do understand that it is close, yeah.
Uh, one thing I wanted to mention too, uh, Alpina Power. Or excuse me, Thunder Bay Electric, this has been like a two-year project to, uh, get the power lines that were kind of servicing put in in the sixties or early seventies that were. Right across the top of the houses. So we paid, uh, to hook both neighbor, you know, to the north and the south and to eliminate that pole, which, you know, it was a kind of a fire hazard. As it existed, because if the pole, old pole cracked off, it would have fallen right on the houses, so. We've paid for all the line boring in the neighborhood and then whatever. Is open yet, uh, near her foundation, we plan on patching all that and, and filling it in, you know, there's just a sand trench. A small one that leads up to the new service, but it's kind of a work in progress and it'll be fixed probably. It's, and I wanted to, uh, address the marks in the driveway. Thunder Bay, uh, Electric denies having do it, having done it, you know, so, but we'll, we're still planning on trying to fix it, you know, because she, she believes that we did it and they deny it, so. Uh, it's just one of those things, but we, we wanna be neighborly and fix it.
There's still a pole there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, obviously I took a picture.
Yeah, they're going to, uh, remove it because all the, you know, we paid for all the, the neighborhood to get it bored in there, you know, and the underground to be put into, uh, uh, three residences. And now they can pull it out. It's in the works.
Go ahead.
This sounds like they're on our, they're working it out.
It's a good work.
All it did is it was ran there and it ran right down to my thing, I had no problem with it being there. I was being nice and let them. Put it there, I don't care, they, they keep bringing up, we paid for it, we paid for it, I didn't need it, I didn't need that, done the poles there, it's on my property, it came right down, I had no issue with where. Now where it's at, I have this piping running alongside my house, so if I wanna do anything with my foundation, I can't because it's. All their piping is right there, but that being said. There's no way that they can deny that that was the claw from the jackhammer, I never, I don't have a jackhammer in my yard. And you can see right where it was at, because you could see it in the yard where they dug into the clay, it went down, it was claws and it bounced all over, I was leaving my house and it was bouncing all over. Now it's in my driveway and I had sludge and little rocks and everything else and it was there for the winter because. It, the ground froze. So I just want to say that and I wanna make clear that with all the problems that have. Come up over the last couple of years. I don't want them to have permission to come on my property, so they'll have to figure something else out.
It's unfortunate because when Kim replaced her windows on her side of her property, there was an older gentleman there who I knew friends with and I didn't have a problem with that. This is, um, this is the temporary thing that we're gonna be taking care of and there was no way around electrical, there was everyone's electricals over the top of our house and it was, that was a fire. But, um, we wanna be good neighbors and we want a one-time opportunity to clean that up and that's really the year long for that. And to follow the rules, always to follow.
Now that, when they told my mom about the, I'm sorry, Tricia Gerard. Kim's daughter.
Okay.
When they said about the power poles, they weren't forthcoming and what they were gonna do with the power, they wanted the power poles down to dig them underground. So that they could put a new roof on their house, nothing about going up. And then I don't see how going up, like what happens when it snows if you're up, snow falls on to her roof? Are they gonna replace her roof when the snow comes down off of it? And how is it a bet, it's better because you're having a firewall, but if somebody's gotta get in there and go up, then there's water damage from fire. I don't understand, two, two feet, how do you get on there two feet? These properties are so small, she's lived there for twenty-three years, never had any issues. Why do we have to go up and build a very big? House on these little fifty-foot properties? But that's just my concern, like I feel bad that we have to go through any of this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All second.
All in favor?
I.
Post. Okay, we have, uh, again, we have the, uh. Options of. Approving the, uh, permit. Approving the permit with restrictions. And stipulations.
Here's some information.
You just set off Siri, so. It was mine, it was mine.
Alright. Okay, approving the permit with restrictions. And stipulations or denying the permit? Any discussion, I'm, um, I don't know how we can. Build the, uh, wall without, uh. One point seven feet, but. Or one point four feet. But, uh. And, uh, two point four, two point five feet on the other. But there isn't a residence, the residence is to the, uh, south of the, there's quite a bit of room there, but.
So, so as this commissioner knows, the only, the only option for these existing non-conformities as ordinance one forty-two states is really to let them wither and die with one exception. Uh, because of their status of a non-conformity, the exception to this rule is, uh, property, private property does have the right to go up. We've had, I think this is the fourth or fifth case, very similar, all of which are on Wrong Lake. Um. And because of the hundred-year-old zoning of the forty by forty-foot lots, fifty by fifty-foot lots that are considered at this point in time, uh, deficient by our current standards, which is a hundred-foot face. Uh, for a buildable and then our one or waterfront residential district. Um. That being said, uh. Given the, the constraints and those, the, the shallow basin in terms of one point four foot. That could, that responsibility and burden would fall on the builder if they so choose, um. There's ways, uh, for construction to go up, uh, without negative impact to adjoining properties, it happens in the world every single day. Um. So by special use a, and with very valid concerns, um, henceforth, uh, when I, Kevin Polly, our building official, actually addressed this case with Ms. West. Um, my concerns when he came to me was, okay, what, what is our fire rating on that exterior wall, a buddy? Um, Mrs. Burns' daughter brings a very valid point, what happens when, uh, nine one ones called, uh, for, God forbid, a, a fire-related issue? What happens when, uh, nine-one-one's called, uh, for, God forbid, a, a fire-related issue? The reality is at that distance, we have Jim Stackwitz with us. The heat that would be produced from a fire at a residence that close in proximity, there isn't enough water in Long Lake to keep that standing structure sound. Um, so this is the, the world that we live in. Henceforth, that's why it took two years to do zoning ordinance one forty-two. What do we do with the cottages that are becoming a little more than the historic used cottage? Uh, and they are afforded one option, and that is. So the footprint doesn't change, uh, the validity and concerns of the, the budding neighbors are sound and reasonably so. But nobody at this commission nor either of the owners designed the properties that way. This is just the, the world in which they're, that they're at now. So, um, that would be, if, if approved, uh, the burden therein, um, as we've already heard from the abiding neighbor, this commission doesn't really have any ability to set precedence. You could make stipulations that any damages that do occur are remedied with a timeline, but outside of that, you, you're, you're kind of hamstrung in what's available. Um, that is more of a civil matter and that was part of the conversation that I had with Ms. Burns prior to this meeting. But the burden there, uh, the long and short of it is they do have the ability to go up. That is the only way they can go. And the burden therein would be upon the builder not to, uh, deviate from that one point four feet.
It's a bracken a hard place situation because we're not police. And we're not the builder. I'd make a motion to approve, uh, the special use permit with contingencies or what's the wording? Stipulations, sorry. That the, uh, builder remain loyal to the property that is the Stemas and, um, and to avoid this, I'm sorry, Burns, I wanted to say Smith, sorry. As, I mean, that's they have strict instructions and if it's found that they're you know, not abiding by that, then we've got other issues.
Don't you mean on your, uh, what did you say it was? Stipulations.
Stipulations.
Okay, that if there is damage, they should be remedied.
In a timely manner as well. Yes, absolutely. By either the property owner or the builder, where whoever is at fault. I would amend my motion to say that.
I would second it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, okay, so a motion to approve the special use permit with the stipulation that the builder and homeowner or property owner abide by.
Any damage?
And, and, and then any damages to be. Come on, John.
I'm.
Abide by the property dimensions and are agreeable to remedy and all damages henceforth.
If there are damages.
Builder and property owner.
Remedy all damages.
Damages to neighbors' property.
Neighbor's property. John supported it.
Okay, so the reason motion, so the motion is made by a shallow withdrawal, um, uh, to grant this case the following situation that the builder and property owners are going to be any all damage to neighbors' property.
As. As well as adhere to, um, property dimensions.
Boundaries.
And adhere to property boundaries. So that builder and property owner remedy any and all damage neighbors' property during construction and adheres property boundary.
Fixing, fixing a timely manner.
Oh, remedied in a timely manner.
Right.
Okay.
Any and all damages remedied in a timely manner.
There's a lot going on there.
So that builder and property owner remedy any and all damages to neighbors' property during, starting in any timely manner and adheres property boundary.
Yes.
We'll call both.
I just have a comment. I just have a comment. Uh, I don't. I don't know if we, you know, we can, we can write what we want and they, I don't think we have the authority to tell the, you know, contractor that he has to repair something private property. At least I never had that authority when I worked on that, but that's, but that's in the motion. So that's just my.
Do you feel like the man should make the motion?
No, that's fine. That's, it's been.
All right.
That's just my comment. That's all.
So we'll call both, Corey?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
No.
Uh, Nora?
No.
Don?
Yeah.
Yes.
So motion first. Motion have.
Motion passed, yes.
Do we have to sign this?
We have to sign this one, Larry? Do we have to sign this one or?
No.
No, okay. All right. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, case. P, P, number P dash zero-nine dash two-three. Oh, that's, I just did. Case dash P zero-eight-two-three Harvest Solar requests a special approval use for installation of a twenty-five megawatt solar array. Property is located on Missouri Bay Road, parcel number zero-one-four dash zero-one-eight dash zero-zero-zero dash zero-zero-one dash zero-one in a forest recreation F R zone district.
I believe, uh, well, I'll let you get started, but when you called the special, uh, the, the public hearing, I believe, uh, Jeff, you're gonna represent.
Motion to
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second. Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is it? Okay. It's you, sir.
I live in the, uh, in the township, so I address this in Spruce, Michigan.
Okay, well, we'll still let you.
But I am the plant manager at the, at the wholesome cement plant there on, uh, the fourteen thirty-five Fort Avenue. So, um, I think, uh, uh, maybe it's been for a long time. I forgot what I was gonna say. Um, uh, we have, uh, plans as a company to reduce our, our footprint has, uh, with regard to, uh, CO2. And have a net zero pledge to be, uh, CO2 free by twenty fifty. And we have, it's a part of that, uh, program by which we want to get and buy any soul or any energy that we have to be again renewable by twenty thirty. As a company, and this is worldwide. All right, so it's a plant today. Uh, we are, uh, we've secured, uh, a contract with, uh, with consumers and, and, uh, and harvest, uh, uh, solar to, uh, put in a solar field on a piece of property that we own, uh, next to the quarry. Uh, and that's about twenty-five megawatts. So the reason it's that size, uh, for two purposes, one, uh, it will, uh, it will stay inside a footprint that will be, uh, will approach on, um, wetland. So we did wetland survey to make sure that it would stay out of the wetland there. And the second is that's a, a fairly good size for us. It'll it will, uh, replace about, uh, seventy-five percent of the power uh, that we need today that we buy today from a grid. So if you don't know the history of the plant, we do also make about sixty-two percent of our own power off of waste recovery from boilers on the back of the channels. So. Um, so that's, uh, that's the, the fundamental piece of, uh, of program. Um, that property is contiguous, contiguous to our, uh, property. Our quarrying property and will access that and have the construction access that from a quarry side. So instead of using the easement that is there, uh, that runs through the, that's property. Uh, we'll have all of that construction, all of that work come through our property and then, and a new, uh, and a new gate through from, from our quarry. Uh, any questions or? Anything for me?
So this is not vacant land right now.
That land is, that land is vacant. As far as I know, there's nothing on there. The trees.
Tree, that's what I meant. That's what I meant. It's gotta be logged up.
It will be logged, yeah. Only a portion of it. So I think, uh, the total piece that we own there, it's like three hundred and eighty or three hundred and ninety acres.
Right.
And this will only be about, uh, eighty acres of that.
Is that what it is? Okay, that was my next question.
Is that gonna be a fenced-in area?
There will be a fenced area to, uh, to, uh, keep people away.
Round the perimeter of the.
Yeah, there's, uh, several considerations on, on the, the gentleman who are gonna, you know, they're taking a lease, so they'll, they'll be managing and operating the property, but obviously we have strict dangers around safety for performance of this work and, uh, environmental requirements, um, which, you know, we've gone through and can explain about uh, dealing with silk, you know, from any runoff. And we did a bat survey and a vegetation survey to ensure that we're uh, no endangered species on the property. And like I said, we went out and did a survey or they did uh, to ensure that they would be out of the, as well, so.
Who's gonna operate it, Jeff?
So, so that'll be. Yeah. And the interconnection will be on our side of the meter. So.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll bring, uh, power across Fort Avenue and back into the plant.
Okay, so it's just going strictly into the plant?
Yeah. We already have an interconnect.
Right.
With, uh, with Alpine Power. So this will be as any extra energy that comes off of this that we don't need. We'll go back to the, Alpine Power through the interconnect.
Okay.
And we put application in with Alpine Power for that interconnect, uh, to follow the rules for the MISO energy service or mission.
Yeah, you mentioned consumers.
Yeah, so, so our deal is with consumers and the consumers has a deal with the private operator for running, building the.
Well, for building it. Okay, okay.
Yeah, so it's a purchase power agreement.
Yes, sir. I assume this is gonna meet all the requirements that are by Eagle, by what little ones we have or what we have in our ordinance. And I know nothing about solar.
Yeah, yeah. So all of that, you know, that's why we needed to do the survey around uh, the wetlands, right? Because if we were going into approach to wetlands and there would be a process by which that would have to be done. Uh, so why we did the survey for, uh, and talked to the state, the N R about, uh, any potential concerns with. Um, I think it's a dwarf bully is one, uh, and then you have, uh, the long-eared, short-nosed.
Brown.
Furry brownback.
Indiana brownbit.
Indiana brownback, yep. And then, uh, and then, um, we've done some soil sampling, uh, to make sure there's nothing, no contaminants. If there are any, we'll, we will address them. Uh, and then, uh, the soap runoff, right? Obviously we don't wanna put soap back into, uh, into the waterway or into the, so. Uh, all of those things will, will be taken in.
Supervisor, Skiver, you've been involved in this. Is there anything you see? They.
No, actually this is, uh, it's actually been a joy. It's kind of, uh, been trying to be amenable to, uh, the very truncated timeline. Uh, but everybody from Harvest Solar that I've met, um, very proactive. Uh, this is just, uh, a good opportunity and it's a good approach to our first solar and alternative energy, uh, special use. Uh, there's been nothing that's jumped off the page. Uh, Mr. Dool's report, uh, shown one, uh, deficiency. Uh, that was to the, uh, the west and to the north end of the properties. Uh, but after speaking with Mr. Dool, those are attainable, uh, changes that could be, uh, brought forward by, uh, this commission. Uh, I don't see, as we currently, as everybody on this question knows, uh, alternative energies has been a topic that we've kind of taken a a really good hard look at, uh, but with, uh, the impending dune for say of that the state is gonna be taking over the zoning mechanisms. We've kind of sat back, uh, to let's see what the, the state was gonna do with the wind and solar since we did our, our statewide tour. Um, they have not, uh, raised, uh, their little hand down in Lansing as of yet. Um, so in my, uh, discussions with, uh, the proprietors, uh, not so much, uh, Jeff with wholesome. Uh, is what is the need on the west and the north end, uh, to the west side, uh, that gets, uh, basically their appurtenances are and correct me if I'm wrong, they're out of the way. It's just, do they have the ability to have any other, like a service road that would fall in that setback? Well, that side, especially on the west side of that property line, that parcel is the quarry. Henceforth, now they're gonna have a direct access for ingress and egress. Um, not, not manipulating, uh, an, an existing easement. Um, every question, quandary concern that I've had have been addressed at this point. Um, they're not gonna be changing topography. They did the wetland delineation. They actually took, uh, did, did their due diligence on, uh, various other flora and fauna. The considerations are just that, uh, you can make those considerations to the, the proximity to the, the north end, the west side setbacks. The west side, like I said, is an active quarry. Does it make much sense at that point? The, the, the higher areas of concern, if you would, in terms to a, a solar, uh, facility uh, is, would be the, the remaining three sites. Cause nobody's gonna be coming through the quarry to get there. Those protocols are already pretty stiff. Uh, so uh, I think we've even covered, uh, they're working with MSU extension, uh, to look at what's, uh, the best blend of, uh, pollinator species to be utilized, uh, as we all know, uh, underneath. Uh, they, the panels are just like those that we saw, uh, downstate at, uh, the state's largest facility. Uh, so they're actually have positive recoup on both sides. Um, so they obviously have just as much production and, uh, technically the low light conditions of my favorite month of March. Um, so I, I see this as, and, and, and here we are, uh, we're looking at a very large, uh, sized parcel of over three hundred acres. And after, uh, it's gone through, uh, their due diligence, they're only looking at a footprint of eighty to ninety acres, I believe. Um, and it mitigates all the concerns I've had. So it's an opportunity for us to start exploring what solar looks like in our community without really having to really digest what solar looks like. Uh, in the conversation, and I know that there's a, a plethora of protocols because of explosives, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, but one, one somewhat childish ask, uh, if you will, was that maybe, uh, downstream through the construction process, uh, this planning commission, maybe go through whatever rigmarole and and training if possible, uh, and to be, have an escorted tour. So we can take what we've taken and learn from other sites and really see it through because I think that this is going to be a topic, uh, that isn't going anywhere. Uh, solar is getting more effective, uh, and winds getting taller and taller. So, uh, in regards to our coastal community, um, it doesn't have a negative eyesore appeal, um, that unfortunately, uh, wind energies have gotten a reputation for. Uh, so from my seat, I, I, all my concerns have already been addressed.
So I have a for, uh, potential impact on property values, nearby properties, terminal impact. We don't feel less.
So, yeah, I guess.
It's gonna be next, next to a big quarry. It's not like.
Yeah, so they have a concern, but they're in, it's, it's in their backyard. Yeah, so they have a concern, but they're in, it's, it's in their backyard. Is it next to their house? No, but they have a concern and a valid right for both of ones. But is a nearly silent, and I would, and impressed upon you to remember the field trip and what the decibels were standing in the middle of sixteen hundred acres. Of, uh, solar, uh, panels and those, uh, exchange unit inverters. Uh, I don't know, in terms of line of sight, uh, between the, the two property owners that are with us this evening. Uh, I, when I look at and measure out, uh, in our, our G I S software. Remembering what those decibels are, it's not gonna have a negative impact, not anywhere close to. The historic hundred year plus history of a quarry with blasting. So, but that doesn't diminish the concerns, and so I guess I would like to hear from, uh, the, the neighboring parcels of what their concerns are, because. In terms of a negative environmental impact, no offense, but in comparison to a quarry. Uh, this isn't even scratching the surface. So, this is a good way for an international, um. Entity such as wholesome, uh, to look and take a, a real world, uh, net carbon zero type of footprint and approach, uh, as pretty much every corporation in the world has made these pledges. It's actually, it's nice to actually have a corporation follow through instead of trying to use subcontractors mitigate ways of making, making any change itself. But yes, I, I don't, I don't live next to it, so that's why we're here, and I, I would love to hear what does.
Okay, anybody have? The floor is open.
Good evening, my name is Jim Stackless, I live on Misery Bay Road. Um, several concerns that I have regarding solar energy. I'm not against solar. But they're planning on destroying. Several hun- was it eighty acres of trees? Uh, how much? C O two do those trees currently absorb? That Lafarge puts out? And how much oxygen are we gonna lose from those trees? That they destroy? Are they planning on replanting any trees anywhere else? Another concern I have is July thirty first of this year, just a couple of weeks ago. There was a large solar farm fire in Lyman, Connecticut. The fire department was on scene for four days. Ninety-six hours putting water on this solar farm. You know, is the facility going to reimburse the township? For equipment and manpower hours? Or is that gonna fall on, on the township to foot the bill to put that fire out if, if something like that happens? Where are they going to have the battery storage for these? Solar panels, is there gonna be any battery storage? Is it gonna be put in the township? Or is it gonna be put in the city limits? Because that plant. Might mainly resides in the city with just parts of their property infringing over onto the township. Currently, there is a large mound. To the east of the plant facing south with no barriers. That they could utilize without having to destroy trees. I'm not sure why that hasn't been utilized or. You don't own that property anymore? Okay, or is that where the, does, if memory serves correct. That was an area that had to be kept over due to C K D dust. So the state owns that now.
Yeah, okay, one at a time, yeah. Uh, address us, not.
Sorry.
Please.
I mean, that, that's, that's just another, another idea, um, and even in the quarry itself. Where they have the, where they're currently piling C K D that is currently capped, could they utilize that area? Um, another concern is. How well are these solar panels going to handle the vibration of their blasting? Are they, is it going to crack the panels? Is it going to alter them so they're not reaching their peak efficiencies? These are, these are things that we don't know. And. Like I said, I am not against solar energy. And I, I quite honestly, I don't even know where. They're planning to put this, that it, that it butts upon our property line. I haven't seen a map that shows. That, so that would be another question that I might have. So, that's what I have for. For discussion.
I'm Beverly Banks, I reside at fifty-eight sixty-four Misery Bay Road. Um, my property butts up to Kim's property and also Holcombe Lafarge. Um, my first question is gonna be, because I don't know, and I have talked to people, uh, all up and down the street. Uh, how was it defined? What were your metrics to define who got the, the papers? Because as far as I'm aware, Kim and I are the only ones that actually got the notice for this hearing. My father lives next door to me, did not get one. The people that reside on the upper side of him. Still on Misery Bay Road, did not get any notification. The, I believe that the Dads may have talked to the people that live across the street in the city side, did not get any kind of notification. So I have a little bit of concern with, the fact is, is that upfront. People that might be impacted by this have not had notification of it, so I don't know what your metrics were at all.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet to what? That, uh, is attached to their land or?
From the edge of the parcel and, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is the, the notifications from. The boundary, the boundary of the parcel itself.
The subject property.
Okay.
Three hundred feet.
Feet. It's three hundred feet of that whole section, not just, you know, like.
So any property that would touch that within that three hundred feet, got notification?
There's a map.
Okay.
In their case that shows, uh, who was within that three hundred.
Okay. So it's more than just the, the dogs and us then?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you for answering that, because that was just out of the people, the population that I did talk to.
Yeah.
Nope, it's fine, as long as, yeah, as long as, yeah, that's fine. Um, the other, some of the other things that I have, we have, um. Tried very, very hard in the township. I believe you, I'm sure you all have just heard about the North Point Preserve. That we just, you know, we pride ourselves on forest recreation and being outdoors. That's one of the beautiful things that we have to offer in Alpena. So now we're going to turn around and destroy eighty acres. Of trees out there, and again, my question is gonna be, and I'll echo what my husband had said about the fact is. Is the return on investment actually there from removing eighty acres? I am not an expert on solar farms. Don't claim to be, not against them. I've looked into the possibility in my house. The, the question is, I mean, a lot of things. What happens when they're covered with dust? And we'll bring this, I'll bring this forward since at least September of twenty-two that I have been talking with Eagle. And we have been meeting with Eagle with, with Jeff. And we have, they've done a lot of work on some of this stuff. But there's also a lot of things that are still problems that continue to happen, even so much as a couple of weeks ago, when the rocks are falling off the conveyor onto the road. That there were problems with their conveyor, the rocks back up, and it could have been very, very dangerous. The dust that we have. That, um. Back in December, I got the reports back from Eagle and David Bowman is his name. I'd be more than happy to forward you all the emails back and forth. About the fact of their C K D dust that was right there on Ford, building up to what I considered concerns of three inches worth of sludge. Safety hazard on the roadway. So they did find that there was problems with their scrubber. Now, these are things that should have all been in place. Why am I public having to go to them? There are many times, and, and Jeff is very aware of it, we've been meeting and I'll send him an email, guess what? It's happening again. Why do you have big? Big dust blooms where you shouldn't have them. It'll go forty-eight hours. His own people at the plant do not even report it to him. That's my concern. Where is gonna be any, any guarantee that, okay, where, where is this actually located? Did you, was you, were you able to, to see where it's actually located? Um. What happens, and I am also one of your township firefighters, what happens when we have to risk? I swear to, I just heard you say something, no?
He didn't say a word.
Okay, no, but, um. It's a concern as a responder is, what, how are we going to get back there? I'm sure that that can be mitigated with figuring out it's behind a fence and locked and all of those things, but all of these. Questions need to be answered before that actually gets approved in, in, into place. And I'm assuming that you read all of the surveys and all of the information. That you referenced the Eagle or the, the bat surveys and, and all of.
When company is doing the due diligence and the reports actually brought forward, doesn't even start a report like that? Then your assumption would be.
So you have not actually read them? I- i- is that what I'm hearing you say?
When they are, they're certified.
It, so it.
At that point in time, I like, so some of your concerns are on Fort Avenue City. Sounds like you're already addressing. But when I get notification that a survey's been done, or Eagle does. Acknowledge notifications of surveys in parcels or permits.
So yes or, yes or no?
You have to, after me to personally, or can I just assume that the state, when they approve it?
You've seen the approvals.
I've seen.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So, no, you haven't particularly read it.
Don't need to, I have enough things on my plate, been reading Eagle report on, uh, a brown bed. Or dwarf lake fires. If they met those standards and they deviated from weapon concerns.
So this is the first solar permit that we have in this township. I would think due diligence would actually be to make sure that you know this inside and out, and there's not any kind of a question whatsoever. That would just be me, that would just be me, right? Um. The other concern too is also be, is this is not owned by the company. This is a third party. And that's always a, a concern when we start bringing in third parties. Where's the accountability? Of it for that, um. The, uh, other questions I did too is I was wondering, and I've never, I have not asked Jeff this particularly, if this is grant funded. Is, is, and what, um, what is the permit income of the township? That we actually receive for this permit?
Nine hundred.
It's nine hundred dollars.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right.
It's commercial.
One of the biggest things, and, and again, I said, I'm not an expert on solar. I do, in some of the basics that I have read, there are a lot of, um, there is electrical interference that ca- can happen, and we have a lot of. Wildlife out there, that that's what I, and I, and I will, between me and my father, we own a hundred and twenty acres. So in it, we have, we have three, three buildings on it for a reason. Because we like it that way and we wanna keep it that way. That's our biggest draw for, for Alpena. I know that the question is gonna be, what about light pollution? It was beautiful sitting in my backyard the other night watching the, the meteor. And, you know, will this be affected? Because, and we have a dark sky preserve that is just at Rockport and somewhere. Somewhere else, so I don't know much, how, how much light pollution or sound pollution that this will actually affect. I mean, I, I get, great, you did a survey about the bats, not right where you're gonna be doing it, but how does it really affect the rest of the wildlife that is around there? And I think that's, um. I think that's pretty much what I got, but I really do appreciate. The opportunity to be able to come in and speak and, and be able to say, these are the things where our concerns are. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, uh, John Dodd, go by Mike. This is my wife, Kim. We live at five two seven six Misery Bay Road. And this solar array is going right behind our house, right behind our forty, we only have forty acres. We don't have twenty, we're, we're poor. The, uh, the, but it's going ex- right behind our house is the property that's gonna be on. And the other day I was walking back through there. And I don't know who did it, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it was, they cleared the, they cleared the road from the pit. To get into this area. That was fine, but then they came back up our easement road and pushed over some trees and pushed all of the stumps over onto our property. That was one, that's one, one of my concerns. How much access are they gonna need through our little? Fifteen-foot gate to get in and out of this property? Uh, it's, it's already used, uh, extremely a lot, a lot by the camps back in that area. I mean, we probably have fifteen or twenty cars a day going through that gate. So how much access are they gonna need to get in there for their construction? Another thing is, uh. Right up the back, I'm, I'm all for solar, you know, it, it's, it's great, alternative energy is great. But. I know it's gonna have the batteries. I know it's gonna have the inverters to convert it. Where are they gonna be located? Are we gonna have to listen to this noise on top of the noise from wholesome that we listen to? Twenty-four hours a day. And then during sometime twenty-four hours a day from the pit, we can hear the, the heavy equipment clanging around. We can't even sit on our back deck without hearing that clang and going down. So that noise and on top of whatever they're gonna, these new inverters are gonna. Put in on us. What's gonna happen there and? The, uh, the batteries, like they, like they've touched on it twice. Uh, lithium batteries are extremely, uh, dangerous, and then what are they gonna do with the waste when it, when they have to replace those lithium batteries? Where's that gonna go to? Is it gonna fill in our landfills or what's gonna, what's gonna happen with the waste? The, and one concern of my wife is she's. She says she has P T, PTSD from me. But, but it's the, it's the constant noise that, that could, that could possibly come from, from that array. We have to listen to that because it, it's only like two hundred and fifty feet behind our, three hundred feet, or three hundred yards behind our house is where the, the line will be. So how much are we gonna have to? Do worry with that and. Other than that, that, that's my, uh, thing, and oh, another thing would be the dust. How, how, when they clean these arrays, what's gonna happen? To, to the chemicals and stuff when they clean them from all the dust that comes from that pit? Because I can park my black truck in my yard, wash it at five o'clock in the afternoon, next morning, eight o'clock, it's got a coating of dust on. It's, it's, and it. It, it pits the paint and everything, so. That's, that's another concern is the, how are they gonna keep those arrays clean?
And I, at this point, a lot of good questions were asked, um. This is Stephen, he represents E S, and I'll let him kind of address slightly a lot of the more specific.
Sure, good afternoon, uh, good evening. Um, Stephen Subu, C M S Energy, uh, project manager, and we have in the back, uh, our, our harvest contractor who will be performing the operations and construction for the project. Um, just to start kinda at the bottom of the last things that were touched on, uh, there, there are not gonna be any batteries at the site. This is not a battery storage facility. Regarding the noise, uh, it was just at a facility. Middle of the day on Friday and having a normal conversation, standing right next to inverters, these. They don't really make. Much noise, especially not any noise that you hear through even a single line of trees. Um, no light, they don't generate light, they don't glow at night or anything like that. There may be some lights on the inverters, you know, like the lights that you have on your, your microphones there, a little L E D just indicating that they're on, but nothing that you'd be able to really see through. Forested area for sure. Uh, I'm trying to address everything, so if there's anything I missed that you really wanna hear on, on some of those questions, please.
Stephen, about the battery, part of the reason that the ties what we did is. There's a group consuming most of that energy at the plant, not all the time, we need a battery. For that to use. Any energy that we add, is the excess during the day, if we walk by, uh, middle or something like that, if we.
Correct, yeah, we're working through. Right.
So, so at night you're gonna use regular deals then? We'll use what we've been, for a year, for the, the way we see recovery that we have today and whatever will be tried off.
Yeah, on the, on the access question, uh, we did that road that they developed to, to access that property north of. Uh, the Dodds, I believe, their property will be only accessing through that road. We will not be using that easement. Um, in that access point on the south side of the site.
So if there's a fire, that's where they're known to come in, or is there some?
No, it, it would be, that would be their access point for a fire, but I mean, I'll, I'll defer to harvest, but it's a extremely rare occurrence without. Battery systems or a fire. There's not really many flammable components in us, in a solar panel, so. Yeah, they get hot, but it's, it's glass, it's.
That, my house is forest, well, there's a brand forest, and if there is a fire, are you going to pitch it before it's dealt with forest and why not?
Any comments on the the flammability aspect or fire for other developments?
Uh, hello, my name is Rob Miller, I'm in charge of engineering for Harvest Solar. Um, so I mean, when you talk about fire, so we will have a buffer between the properties and then also the fence and an additional buffer from the fence. To the solar modules, and then the inverters and the transformers that would be a concern will be farther inside the internal site as well. Um, so that's a little bit of that is basically decided here, but to the south will be a minimum of fifty feet from the property line to the fence. It'll be open, yeah, including the current space. No, no, yeah, we're not going to be, right, building wall, um, there will be the pollinator field that will be planted in that area as well. Um, in the areas where there is ground that can be planted, uh, there are scenarios where the limestone does come to the surface. Uh, so those areas obviously won't be cleared because there's nothing there, you know, we would not be able to get it back. Uh, so one of the other things that we were talking earlier with Nathan, um, and one of the things that we've done on our sites is we want to meet the fire department. Out there on site and go through what emergency response would go, uh, would be like. Uh, today, we have, we've been doing this for about twelve years, we've now had a fire on one of our sites, um, but we do want to prepare. Uh, so we do, we need emergency services to be able to build through that plan. Um, and if we have access to the site, we have training how to do that, um, we do that with any fire department. Uh, so there will be cameras that are on the monitoring inside the monitor twenty-four seven, uh, through a computerized system. If there is an area that we want to give a person that are set out, um, people will be able to monitor that.
Good, will there be access to the solar farm area via the easement? At all, or just from the road through to the quarry?
The roads.
So I think there's one thing you need to understand that we're talking a little bit about is the easement that that goes to property to the north. Of that property, come through some of that area, so we'll only need to move. From more important on the hard property, uh, that that easement probably towards the, the fence line and quarry to get out of there with.
But they just, I'm referring to seeing eaten off of misery Bay Road and that's the dot.
Yeah, I'm not against that, it's useful when it comes on the farm. They kind of goes up there and the end is up there, right?
Right, well, that's what I, that's.
As part of that easement law, I think, with that.
Meanders and wanders back like two miles, would there, is there access? From that easement to the solar farm, or the general will be through the, the quarry will be, so it'll be not through the quarry, but through that property, but outside of the quarry.
Well, I, uh, the side road there.
The design life of these is what, thirty years?
Yeah, thirty years, our lease with wholesome is for twenty years and then an evaluation to give them a financial opportunity to review and us to make any modifications or updates.
And so if you, for some reason abandoned this, was there like a retirement plan to get rid of this stuff or?
Yeah, we keep, uh, we have a, uh, a requirement to. I think we can, if you wanted to, I don't know how it works with this, but we needed to talk about a situation that I heard that there was a reclamation plan. Around this piece, I think it, I think that would be very rude, you know, uh, I hope I'm not looking at one here.
Well, our kids, our kids will be here, yeah, we want to, uh, we don't want to leave.
Yep, and that's part of our lease agreements is that we remove all of our equipment and restore replant trees and return to its original state upon lease completion. Sorry about poniness.
Well, we, we did tour it facility downstate and I, I believe that, you know, they had a, had some kind of a plan to retire it. Yeah, because if all of a sudden somebody comes up with some miracle and it's, you know, it's a lot cheaper than that, well, then we're going to get rid of that.
And in twenty years, that's absolutely going to be the case, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
Batteries, no?
I did have one more thing to add, uh, one, one thing we did do, which was not a requirement, we did FAA level layer cutting. Um, again, not a requirement, that's something that we did do for that, make sure that for the residents, there would be zero layer on the residents. Uh, so I believe that was included in the package as well, um, that is the most stringent, uh, layer requirement, so.
Who do you get permitted through with the state, MPSC or?
Uh, well, we will.
Is there any state permitting?
Uh, for this, there's not any state permitting.
I didn't think so.
We do have to go through a Fina Power for the interconnection process, um, which will also get estimated up to DSO for for their evaluation as well.
Okay, is it possible, since we're going to rely on the agreement between you and wholesome, um, your lease agreement, is it possible for us to see it? Or not?
Yeah, I would assume so, you know, I defer to wholesome on their confidentiality.
I know they're confidential, I.
I think we can kind of.
Yeah, I don't care about the economics, I just want to see the reclamation end of it.
Yeah, we can include that as a separate document.
Yeah, thank you.
We're not, even for our agents, we're not, um, we want to be open about what we're doing. We have our, we have our thing.
Yeah.
Closure pauses, uh, term to use.
Right.
I, I, I would be concerned if you weren't concerned about.
Well, that, that's something I think the board would be concerned with.
Yeah, and that's standard practice in us every single project that we've ever done and ever will do.
I, I think you're talking about very large, right?
Okay.
To have a large.
I guess how? How large is is harvest?
Well, CMS Energy will be the owner and the leaseee of the site, so CMS Energy is, uh, you know, one of the largest companies in Michigan, second largest landowner.
And how big is harvest?
So, so I mean, we'll be the general contractor, design, uh, we're a family owned business based out of Jackson, but you can, we live by the employees. As far as everybody goes solar, we're a rock well here, we didn't talk before that, um, the economic toll that.
Oh, when you're done, you turn it over to them and it's their responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be the ones that manage that.
We harvest on their operations and maintenance of the site.
Okay.
And we do that with the other side.
Yeah, whi- which also includes the dust, I know dust was mentioned, and it's definitely one of our concerns for the site too. And it's, we can track that by looking at the energy production and seeing what the sun should be producing during that day and and what we are producing. And very easily identify across the panels that we need to go out there and just dust them off.
Yeah, and the models have a back to protect them from, 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 so today we've never had to clean the model, but it does come off. Other are environmental biodegradable soles, uh, that were designed for you to grow, do the gas make to their splitter. Uh, there are a lot of easy requirements for them, uh, inside the 18000. We're going to reach out to figure out what the rules even are, like I said, in our industry, we don't have to clean the model, um, the first thing is air pollution, there's smell, and smell is amazing.
Just, just a question with all of your, um, surveys and usually, you know, there's some sort of, um, it's not certificate, I know that's not required. But has there been any survey of potential, how much will actually be produced, like, we don't get a lot of sunny days during the year?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's one of our first steps when we start developing the plant and and how we built and sized the plant to meet their needs and to meet our export limits to Alpine Power. So yeah, that's the very first step in this whole process.
So what happens in the case of, okay, you gotta clean them more often than not, and we're not producing sunny days and the return on investment is not fair?
Oh, well, that's, that's on us, we have an agreement, I can't speak, you know, it's a confidential agreement with wholesome. Uh, but it, it's a, a flat agreement either way. So if we produce a lot of energy, you know, we're losing money if we don't produce, you know, either way, it's going to balance out every year. Yeah, thank you for, anything that I didn't answer, the designer hot list?
I don't want to hear noise and I don't want to ask for a town.
Same, and I don't have a solar field going of my backyard either, so you're, you're not an unusual place.
Two people, one at each station during the day, and that's it, and you may not get your paid on calls. We try very hard to, but you, you know, this is all a factor that, that really doesn't come into play.
One, one question I had was the water runoff.
Water runoff, yeah, so we, we plant a pollinator blend that has, are you concerned about soil erosion? Um, where that water is going, anything in that water or?
We have, we have a free for us to our property and then up in the, uh. They're all into eyes and say, which.
Yes. Yeah, so, so we will have soil erosion and sedimentation control net measures set up during construction where we're actively cutting down trees. That collects all sedimentation, those were, that permit through the county requires a weekly inspection of the entire site. It requires inspection after rainfall events of over two inches. Uh, so those are constantly monitored by both our construction crew and checked on by the county.
Also, bill and panels via either rainwater or snowmelt, that runoff, is there any concerns that?
The, the pollinator and erosion blend that we put in there has a lower runoff coefficient than the trees and wooded sections that are already there. So it absorbs more water and has less runoff than the current state of the land. Even with the panels, you know, they're spaced out, you can fit a tractor between them.
Pollinators, do you need like flowers and plants?
Yes, yep, yep, so.
But I do want, I do want to make sure that that.
Yeah, so we work with a native habitat developer, uh, Black Rock, Blackwater, Blackrock, I'm sorry, uh, don't know the name, the Black One something. But they, uh, work through our environmental engineer, WSP, and they design native pollinator blends based on, uh, the exact area of location. Pollinators native to this exact area of the state, um, and ensure that we have pieces in there that have those erosion control measures, mixtures that ensure that the local animals enjoy them. Uh, and can use them, you know, maybe not with the deer, with the fences around, uh, our pollinator fields are used for birds, bees, peasants, turkey, you know, all, all kinds of stuff, hummingbirds, yeah.
Well, uh, nothing should then leach into the, the groundwater, which would then leach into our groundwater.
Correct, yeah, we, we don't have any concern of any chemicals that we use in the panels, we, in, in general, um, with runoff or leaching, they're protected, they do have very strong glasses rated for. Baseball sized hail, which I understand that was an issue a few years ago. Um, but the, the pollinator blends do prevent erosion and water runoff better than a forested area.
Appreciate you being so forthright and professional in your presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comment, or can I make a motion? Motion to oppose a public hearing.
All favor. Okay, for the fourth time tonight, we have a, we have options.
So I, I would like to also state, as you get ready to deliberate upon this case, um, the ask is in the concessions, uh, before this, uh, planning commission. Our two, as we know, uh, look at the east and the south side with fifty foot, uh, easement or setbacks, sorry, I just forgot my own vernacular. Um, and then the consideration would be to, uh, explore a twenty foot, uh, right away and setback on the quarry side. Because it interfaces with the quarry and to the north, there are no other residences. Um, so it'd be my position to support the fifty foot on the south and the east side that have the, the closest affiliation with the residential use. Uh, and to give consideration to, given the consideration of the amount of land mitigated through the wetland delineation process, uh, to give, um. Stipulations and guidance as to a twenty foot buffer of setback on the north and the west side, so.
Nathan, why would you be concerned about a fifty foot on the east side?
Just because it has the, the highest concentration of forested lands remaining.
Okay.
And part of the concern is. Yeah.
Okay, okay. I figured it would be, but I mean, there's no houses or anything over there to worry about except for your house, but you're on the side. Yeah.
See Kevin is on the, uh. From Maine, Kevin's coming to us from Maine, so.
Kevin was on for, uh.
Oh, was he?
Yeah, he's been watching it.
Okay.
And since you've been on the East Coast tour, I think principally, I think I've done all, all the lift on, on this case.
Okay. All right, we can, uh. Make a motion to approve. The twenty-five megawatt solar array, we can, uh, motion to approve special land use twenty-five megawatt solar array with. With conditions, or we can make a motion to deny special land use, land use insulation of twenty-five megawatt solar array. Or we could table it.
Tom, one of the questions you had was what's going to happen at the end of life?
Yes.
I would really think we would want to see what's in the contract. And make sure that's something that we think we can live with also, I'm sure it is. I'm, I've seen consumers agreement, so I'm sure it is, but I would like to see that.
Well, you can put stipulation as to, if they, if they're allowing to redact confidential, um, then that's upon them. Um, but you can actually just simply say as a stipulation that upon conclusion of the effective life cycle, that any and all equipment are removed from site parts. It's still stipulation, but I'm sure it sounded like they had no issues.
Right.
Giving that language, I don't think you can affiliate with the decision of this case. You can use it for your own.
I got you, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't need it.
Stipulation would still stand.
Right.
So your concerns are well founded, but I think already addressed in that and.
Right.
After some redaction, the stipulation would simply be. What is the decommissioning status at, at, at the plant, you know, at twenty years, have a plan. I think everybody, anybody that has that kind of investment wants to cover those bases. I think everybody, anybody that has that kind of investment wants to cover those bases.
Well, it sounded like removal and. Rescration was.
Is there anything in the agreement or, or in state? Regulations? Um, I'm speaking from Grashit County experience, a lot of. And, uh, they have a. Bond that is visited every five years. To see if that bond is sufficient. To. Care down this wind farm or solar farm. Should consumers go bankrupt? Or whatever, I'm sure you're very familiar with that.
Yeah, I.
So.
I had worked for CMS.
Pardon?
Working for CMS Energy, I haven't had to. Take out a bond for much.
Okay.
Uh, but I'm familiar with, not on a state one.
But usually on a county level like Grashit County. There is a bond that is in place. Uh, to, uh, like I said, get revisited every so many years, five years, I believe down there. To make sure that the decommissioning. Whatever it takes to decommission, whatever you estimate your amount is. Is covered in a bond in case wholesome, God forbid, or, or CMS go bankrupt. So. That would just protect us.
So we, we have one for quarry.
Right.
Require that state. Be, uh, certified fund for.
Right.
But I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know that there is anything, yes. No, it's all local jurisdictional. So. I wouldn't mind asking Denise about that. He, which she's come up with in the past. Or.
Ask you a bond?
Yeah.
It would be county driven. It would be county driven.
Okay.
So is this finding missions request that Alpina County do a bond or is it decommission of a solar farm?
That's I wonder.
Because they want to even know which way's up.
Right.
So at what point in time do we, I mean. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm making assumptions, uh, obviously wholesome, and this plant's been there longer than anybody's been alive. I, I. I tend to say, if you have the money, put it up, but you definitely define what that decommissioning process is. But if you're going to start demanding that Alpina County serve a bond process. We're going into definitely uncharted territory.
Right.
And.
Here. Uncharted territory, here.
Yeah, yeah, but also in Grashit County, Grashit County as an entity. Drive typically.
Right, right. Right, I, I agree, I agree.
So it's a little unique, but your, your sound, your thought process.
Right.
Where do you even start that process?
Good question.
Yeah, and I don't think Denise.
Okay.
But I think if, if you define stipulations that you want. You can, you can be. Generally specific enough. To doubt those sides of processes. I mean, what do you have, I think, look at the numbers for decommission. At. End of life, we already have a calculation as to what that costs.
For cost. No, we've done for other projects. So I mean, we typically don't share options, especially on private property. You know, I think we have, we won't, we do these companies in the state. Uh, we're, uh, working on inside the.
So then how can we effectively give it, or your question is that stipulation? And to feel confident, because what is your anticipated start and construction date of this site? Upon approval, or what does that count?
About three, four construction itself with the. Uh, October. Three, four, next week.
Okay. Build out time?
Uh, by a year. About, uh, during our C O D.
That's what the highlights and everything? That's what the highlights.
Yeah, that's whole project in service or interconnection with Alpina Power included. Generating power for. For.
Yeah.
I'm gonna rely on you, John.
I'm okay.
Let's be specific with stipulations to the, the decommission. And you know the timeline. And so you can say, you know, to have, uh, your stipulation could be at, uh, at the rolling twenty year contract. Have, uh, the considerations of recalculation of decommission five. I, you could stipulate, obviously, there's confidential numbers out there.
Right, right.
You're at least now defining in twenty years. This body. Will. Reengage. And look at what those costs are. In terms of our area, is it, is it going to be, is, is there, ROI is going to be the driver? Large companies don't say large by, by putting the, the company project.
Right.
Um, but just define it as, as you want, I mean, that's, those are the.
I really, I really don't know that we need to worry about what the decommissioning costs are, just to know that wholesome or. Consumers is responsible for that.
Yeah.
Period.
So assign it like that and say, yeah, yeah, if that sounds like they have twenty year with five year rolling. Kind of contract to say, to be revisited in twenty, at the twenty year, you can stipulate that and they can bring forward wholesome or whoever the, uh. Provider is that's covering that solar array. And send that.
To make sure.
Make sure that they're staying on the thing, because the, the likelihood with the, the turnaround in technologies is, by the time of the twenty year. They may want to give consideration if they've already hit that ROI and giving those upgrades at that point in time.
Right.
I mean, technologies.
Yeah. Prove.
Mm-hmm. So. I would like to add that.
Okay.
As a stipulation.
True. So we're, uh, you want to do with, uh. Go with number two motion?
Number two.
Okay, what are we adding to it?
Oh, good God, how the heck do we word that?
On that, was you with the property owner? And the operator.
At the time.
That there is, uh. Continued. Uh, decommission. Process.
Process, yeah.
And, uh, and the.
Yeah.
If there's something like that, is that what you're looking for?
That's, I think, that, that's what I'm looking for. It's just, I start thinking legalese and it gets really big. I know. Um.
You just want somebody.
And I dealt with this contract so much that I know it's going to get big, so.
Well, you just want somebody to take it down.
Yeah, I just want to make sure somebody responsible.
We take down that, that's all the copper, all the copper ceiling.
Oh, so recyclable, yeah.
Be bad to happen on other projects.
Oh, I'm sure. Oh, I have to. So.
We'll just take out.
Lynn?
Lynn needs to know.
Yeah. That is how you want it.
Um.
Owner slash provider to define decommission. At twenty year term.
Yeah.
Or is, or is the stipulation there that the owner is the part of each of the properties?
You know, that's what there, that's, that's, that's better language for it, but the owner. The property owner is responsible for. Restoring the property to original condition. Or as near as possible.
At the time of decommission.
At the time of decommissioning.
There's no timeframe, but that happens five years or that happens. Four years.
Or fifty? Yeah. Yeah.
Like you say, property owner responsible to restore property to original condition.
At the time of decommission, sir.
At five of decommission.
To remove. And restore. Remove panels.
I have, uh, to restore property to the original position. Time to decommission.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Lynn.
John just made that motion.
Made the motion.
Okay, John made that motion? Supporting it?
I asked. Or support.
Okay, so the role call?
Yes.
Okay. So motion is being by John Sanders, provided by Frank Code to grant the following page. For the case of following the position, the property owner responsible for restoring property to original condition at time of decommission. Uh, Frank Code.
Yes.
There it is.
Yes.
Uh.
Yes.
Don Code.
Yes.
Done.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Anything else for the good of the cause?
Not for me.
Uh, just. Quick thing, uh, with the more complaints on lawn maintenance, uh, this season. That I have in the previous six years, uh, so the county attorney and I, with the help of Denise Fine, not recreating wheel, are exploring a. Lawn maintenance permits, um, for residential and merchant. Uh, state legislator changed, we can actually kind of be a little bit more particular about our zoning control mechanisms in terms of ordinances. Um, and so this one have a negative impact, we couldn't enforce it for a rack. Or rags because. There's other uses of those land, uh, but this will be, uh, a lawn maintenance work, it's, uh. Somewhat similar to the city. Um, but. We don't have one and people want one. So all your grass.
Will you be able to?
Don't get a go to eat your grass.
Will you be able to enforce it?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm actually sitting down with, uh, a, a potential enforcement, yes.
Really?
But it's at, it's at a reasonable.
Will we need to then apply or do a bunch of cases for special use permits for pollinators?
No, already addressed. All on butter bad.
But.
No, no, there's. That's. Other than that, just for some amendments, an additional one.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.